If you would please, let's all rise and Mr. Ward, would you lead us in prayer and plates?
Sure. Where we come to you today on this rainy day to conduct county business, we pray that you will guide us, protect us, keep us, and we also like to pray for these next few years, we've got some new commissioners being sworn in today, pray for our guidance and their guidance to make the best decisions for our county and the people that we serve. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time in the agenda, there is the swearing in for Commissioner Cheryl Sanders, and then next will be Commissioner Otis Amos.
Commissioner Sanders, good morning.
Good morning.
If you would please, raise your right hand, I have a Bible here, if you'd like to put your left hand over. It's okay? I do solemnly swear or affirm-
I do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will support-
That I will support-
Protect and defend-
Protect and defend-
The Constitution-
The Constitution-
And government-
And government.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified-
That I am duly qualified-
To hold office-
To hold office.
Under the Constitution-
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And that I will well-
And that I will well-
And faithfully perform-
And faithfully perform.
The duties-
The duties.
Of the office of County Commissioner-
The duty of the office of County Commissioner.
Of which I am now about to enter.
Of which I am now about to enter.
All right, thank you. If you would sign here, boy. I have blue and black here, your choice. I want you to sign here and here. Sign there and down to the Bible.
Welcome back, Commissioner Sanders.
As the old saying goes, I'm back in the saddle again.
All right, you want somebody to come up and hold the Bible for you? Yes, sir, that's fine, left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
Or affirm-
Or affirm.
That I will support-
That I will support.
Protect and defend-
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and government-
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That that I am duly qualified-
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office-
To hold office.
Under the Constitution-
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
And that I will well and faithfully perform-
I will faithfully perform.
The duties-
The duties.
Of the office of County Commissioner-
Of the office of County Commissioner.
Of which I am now about to enter.
Of which I am now about to enter.
Congratulations.
Love you later.
Sign right here for me and room elders.
That was a good sentence.
Blue or white.
I'm finally here.
Before we proceed, do you, I wanted to have anything you want to say other than what you've said?
No.
I just wanted to give you time, that's why I was asking.
Well, I just want to say, as you all know that during the campaign, I lost a very significant part of my family. But he's right here with me, he's right here with me, and he is with me, and he's the reason why I have a mission, and I have a vision, and he's all part of it, and my God is sacred. Just like I said, my priorities are like they always have been, God, family, and the people of Franklin County.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Rowan?
Commissioners, so next is our organizational meeting, which is something we do every year, and usually I make a recommendation, the board decides to accept or go in a different direction is what they like to do. This, what I do, being that Commissioner status has returned to the board, Commissioner Amoson is new to the board, I recommend that we let Commissioner Jones serve one more year as chairman, and Commissioner Ward as vice chairman, that would allow the board to kind of basically get to know each other, acclimate themselves, and we move on.
You will accept it, Commissioner Warren?
I'm good with that, yes, Commissioner Sanders.
You will accept it. I make a motion that Ricky Jones comes back as chairman for one year-
I second.
As chairman, and then vice chairman for, you want to do it separate and you want to do it together?
Do you have any objections, sir?
Together.
Together?
Yes, ma'am.
And then also add to my motion that we take and put Commissioner Ward as our vice chairman.
So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders to, for me to retain the chairmanship for one more year, with Commissioner Ward being the vice chair, we have a second by Commissioner Amoson. Any discussion before we vote, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Congratulations, Chairman, congratulations, Vice Chairman.
All right, up next is approval of the minutes.
So moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, payment of the county bills.
They made.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Mr. Rowan, up next we have the presentation-
Ms. Mary?
From Duke Energy. And what do we need to do and how do we need to do, sir?
She's going to stand there and explain, the grant, tell you what the grant was about, what you're getting this money for, and then we have another Kodak moment where she comes up and we do a presentation to the board.
Is this okay right here?
That's fine.
Stand right here, come up to the phone. First of all, I want to say congratulations to the returning and new commissioners and everything. I am Mary Swope, I am with Duke Energy Florida and their Economic Development Team. I'm an industry recruitment manager. Economic background is that Duke Energy Florida, for the past several years, has only had three people that have done economic development. Now, I know you guys all know Danny Collins, and Danny Collins is still a part of us. Danny is our Government and Community Relations Manager. But we were able to expand the Economic Development Team so that all our counties had someone representing them in their territory. I am fortunate and blessed enough to have Franklin County as one of my nine counties. So I'll be working with you guys, I've already been working with you guys. I'm about to celebrate one year with Duke, so I'm pleased to do that. And I'm also honored and pleased to bring to y'all today, and I think you guys know it, but Franklin County applied for one of our Economic Development Grants. These grants are given out to our Economic Development Partners, counties, and cities to work on marketing, strategic planning, and economic development, and the steps that Franklin County is taking to go forward in that mission. So I'm pleased to say, you know, we wanted the Kodak moment, you guys already know it, but that y'all applied for and received a $25,000 grant from Duke Energy Florida Economic Development Foundation to begin the strategic planning, y'all have worked in the past, we're going to work continuing in the future, to continue that strategic planning for Franklin County in economic development. So we get the Kodak moment and everything for your, so however you guys want to do it.
Come on up and we'll do it up.
All right. Michael, you'll use your camera, I'll just let you text it to me. How do you want to do this? Okay. All of you guys down here.
I want the real tip.
I'm making y'all get up and work this morning.
Ready? One, two, three, Franklin County. How about that? Congratulations.
Sadly, I have to take the check back. We're all about renewables, so we are trying to reuse our tip.
Well, Mary, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure the clerk would be able to deposit that particular check anyway, so, yeah. But I do have one item, Commissioners, that I would like to address. Once you get comfortable in your seats-
Thank you, Lou.
If I could just, oh, it's on page 20 of your printed packet, item number six. And it starts off earlier this morning, not really earlier this morning, a few minutes ago, Ms. Swope of Duke Energy presented a $25,000 check for Duke Energy Economic Development Strategic Plan. Duke Energy has also been working on a site readiness project at the airport. I would like to present their findings to the board. It's going to be a little lengthy, so I recommend doing this in a workshop setting on December 6 at 1:30 p.m. if everyone's schedule allows. Ms. Swope can answer any questions you have regarding that site readiness project this morning. I wanted to kind of catch her while she was here, in case you have questions. Commissioner, Otis Amoson, the newest Commissioner, the airport is in his district, so he might be the one, Mary, if not today, you could probably receive a call from him shortly to, you know, to explain some more what's been going on. But if you guys have any questions right now that you'd like to ask.
Any questions, Commissioners?
And is your schedule, I know you're not looking at your calendars right now, but does, December 6, that's our next regular meeting, 1:30 in the afternoon, about an hour, Mary?
About an hour, we'll present the findings from the consultant that came in and did that, and then also hopefully begin to start talking next step forward-
Yes.
For you guys.
Any questions? Ms. Mary, I do want to say, first off, for the public to be aware, thank you guys for everything you've done so far to help, we're just getting started, so don't plan on going anywhere, because we have a lot to do when it comes to economic development. We're basically at the bottom going up, but we, in the worst kind of way, need to diversify our economy. So we are thankful for this help, and we plan to turn that check into something real for the residents of Franklin County. And just so the board is aware, the discussions we've been having have been around the industrial land around the airport. We own some, the city of Appalachia has some across the street, but we're doing our best to make sure we're marketable and ready, should anybody come knocking, because they're not going to wait three months for us to figure out if we have something or if we don't have something. So I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Thank you, and we look forward to partnering with you guys to take all of Franklin County forward, not just that site.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. Mary.
So from you, Mr. Chairman, I need a motion from the board to schedule that workshop-
Okay.
On December 6 at 1:30 p.m.
All right, pleasure to the board.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward and a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Sounds like we're having a workshop, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yep. All right, now it's time for public comments. Taking these in no particular order, I have them in front of me, Mr. Rudy Mee.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Rudy Mee, Alligator Point, welcome, new Commissioner, and Cheryl, longtime Commissioner, welcome back. Just following up, making sure that the new and former are still going to believe in our thoughts on park and nourishment at the old K O A. Totally against the idea of a beach in front, it isn't necessary as the large storm to the south of us reinforced, a beach would really do nothing in addition to protecting that road. It's a great road, by the way, thank you all, very nice to drive on it, if you haven't been down, it's worth a drive. I've been down several times. But again, just reinforcing, the park would be of no benefit to Franklin County, and it would be a detriment to the residents of Alligator Point. Can't emphasize that enough. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to speak on that subject, if any of you need to review that before that comes up again. Anyway, thank you, welcome again to the new Commissioners, pleasure having you.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Ms. Mel Kelly?
I'm Mel Kelly from Carabelle. Commissioner Sanders, I want to say I know that your husband continues to be very proud of you.
Thank you, Ms. Mary.
Congratulations to the new Commissioners. I'm bringing up an issue which I brought up several years ago. I have just learned that it's possible that Michelle is working on this. But more than two years ago, I asked you to consider replacing the entrance door to this building with a handicapped accessible power door to make it easier for people like me to enter without help. In the rezoning ads, you say your meeting room is handicapped accessible. I promise you that heavy door makes accessibility very difficult for people like me to access this meeting room and other important county offices in here. Please do your constituents a favor, budget facilities or ADA money, and live up to your advertised handicapped accessible promise for this building as well. That was number one. Number two, for your information, I was one of five of an elite statewide tourism marketing committee, and I am somewhat, I am someone with more than 30 years of successful local, regional, and state tourism promotion. As such, I encourage you to ride to the county entrances to view the dreadful, unsuccessful, embarrassing new welcome signs. Whoever designed and approved them should be ashamed, they are truly a terrible tourism model. Number three, speaking of embarrassing, the fiasco that is Island View Park Reconstruction is shameful. Unlike most of you, I drive past that park four or five times a week. Even after the materials delay excuse for a promised October finish, it is only now that real progress has been made, just as of last week. The asphalt has finally been poured, and perhaps completion will be in November or this lifetime. Instead, it was obvious to me that North Florida regarded this job as low on their totem pole. Shame on them for creating a real embarrassment for our county and delays for those who wished to use this lovely waterside park. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Up next, Mr. Alston.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you again for the privilege of being before you, and as everyone said, congratulations to the new folks, thank you for your service. I represent a couple clients on Bluff Road, they're in, in your district there. I didn't speak with you before- speak with you before because you weren't sworn in, so I will be in communication with you. But, basically, as was recommended, we would get together with the, um, Blueberry, Boot, Mr. Moore, what's her name?
Dewberry.
Yeah, Dewberry. I know Caleb Brown. I can't, Dewberry. I apologize. My bad. But, get with Dewberry, naturally with Mr. Howard, and we have all met together. When I spoke with y'all the first time two months ago, I had five recommendations for to solve the problem. We've whittled that down to three, or I would say the engineers whittled that down to three. It was on me to find permission from the local adjacent property owners to get a easement. Matter of fact, the former commissioner said, get me an easement and I'll get it done. That was his words. So, all three property owners are willing to give up an easement, one which is conditional if we choose that route. But, basically, for the new commissioners, there's some water problem on Bluff Road. I won't go back into that, but I think we're good. I think we have, we're moving forward. Naturally, we have to get back to you with a price and cost estimate, but without any salesmanship on our part in any way. I think the engineer came up with the right solution and the best solution for this, and all I needed to do was get permission from the property owners to get that accomplished. Any questions? And I will be in contact with you. I, and I voted for you and support you and all that stuff, and God bless you both in what your new endeavor. But, I just felt it was appropriate not until you, until you were elected. And so, any questions of us? I'm sure Mr. Howard will answer questions. He was in those meetings as well. Everybody good? Thank you again for the time to speak to y'all, and thank y'all for putting this together. I look forward to speaking to you again next month.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next would be Ms. Debbie Jordan. I believe she's attended by Zoom.
She is, uh, what's the phone number on her? 1-549... Debbie, if you would unmute yourself, then you could address the board.
Can you hear me? I'm on...
Now, 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 we're good. Good morning.
Thanks. Good morning, Debbie Jordan, Landmark Village. I wanted to actually, I know that Veterans Day was on the 11th, but I felt it important to share something pretty awesome that happened in Landmark Village to honor veterans and those who, those who don't know about it should know about it. At the corner of West Pine and Collins in Landmark Village, your eyes will automatically be drawn to a tribute to our veterans by the very talented artist and Landarkian Joan Mayde. You may know her from her zany Carabelle Riverfront Festival favorite fishy fashion show, but her passion for expression through art seems to know no bounds. Did you know she is a gifted mural painter as well? Joan, for hours upon hours, days upon days, driven by sheer determination, worked tirelessly to complete the transformation of two cracked and aging columns into a memorial to honor our veterans and to have it completed before Veterans Day. Even when sitting on wet asphalt covered with a small tarp, Joan was still so focused and she seemed oblivious to the inclement weather overhead. Joan was a woman on a mission, and I'd say that mission's a success. Eventual plans include adding landscaping to enhance, surround, and protect this touching memorial. You can read about the significance and the history of this location on a sign that is affixed to one of the columns. Stop the car, get out, stretch your legs, and admire this gesture of honor and gratitude to our veterans. Now, that's community. That's all I have to say. This is Debbie Jordan from Landmark Village.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Rona, thank, that was all the public comments. The rest of them are wanting to speak during agenda items.
This particular, okay.
I believe so, yes. Up next would be Sheriff A.J. Tony Smith. Want to talk about some ballistic shields?
Well, yes, the last meeting, remember, we brought up, we wanted to see what it looks like. I believe Commissioner Lockley might have asked for demonstration. I'm not sure if that's going to happen today.
No, let's don't do that.
But, we'll see. And then I do have an item about a meeting with the sheriff tomorrow. I'll read off my report when he's completed with this demonstration. Well, presentation, not demonstration, gentlemen, so.
Yeah, demonstration. So, we want to know who wants to hold the shield while we're shooting. I should have figured, honestly.
Michael, no big deal, right?
I was asking where the guns were.
We got plenty of guns. Don't you worry about that. Anyway, welcome, commissioners. It's a pleasure. And I know you wanted to see a demo of some of the shields that y'all bought that we're going to be, hopefully not utilizing, but we're going to be in possession of so that if there is an active shooter situation in our school, hospital, wherever it may be, we're going to have enough that we should be able to use them and make an entry instead of sitting around and waiting. So, this ballistic shield is pretty simple. This shield will stop 556, 308, probably just about anything except maybe 50 caliber. But, that's it. So, if there is an active shooter, and we've seen more active shooter situations in the past year, kind of like the presentation I showed y'all earlier, most of them, a lot of them are occurring with high-powered rifles now. It's no more handguns. Everybody's transitioned to the AR-15 and things like that. So, that's where we're seeing a lot more of the active shooters are using that kind of weapon. So, we had some shields, but they were not capable of defeating rifle rounds. So, these new ones will. And they were obviously more expensive, but that's pretty much it right there. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
I got one, Sheriff. Don't we have some, it's my understanding, and this, I'm new, so I'm catching up, but we got some wheel, some that are mobile with wheels?
We have, we have one that's probably going to have wheels because it's bigger.
That's what I was about to...
And harder to maneuver. It's not as quick, quick to get out and deploy. We'll probably leave it probably at the school, at the main school, but these are much easier to handle and deploy. Yeah, the wheels are great.
I was just curious. That's just primarily for a team, you know, to get behind.
Well, you know, here's the thing, too. There may not be four people to make an entry into a room in our situation because, you know, we're, we're a big county. We only have four or five deputies working at a time. Sometimes it might only be three. So, of course, if you have school resource deputy, then you may have two people making an entry. You may just have one person. It depends on, these things happen, and about two minutes they're over. So, there may not be time for four or five people to get there. So, it's, that's one of the reasons we wanted a shield that could defeat rifle ammo so that if one or two people are there, they can make the entry, not have to wait, because we're not going to wait. We're going to make entry if something's going on, because, like I said, a matter of two or three minutes, it's over.
How heavy is it? Is that a curious answer?
Thirty-five pounds.
So, you can, you can still deploy your weapon?
Exactly. It actually comes with a strap. You can actually throw it over your shoulder. Yeah. It helps support the weight. You know... It's got handles on the end. Flip it around when they see it. Y'all want to bring it on?
I'm going to get up.
Right, you come on up.
Bring it here, James. Let me look at it.
Bring it on up, James.
I want to see it. I want to make sure that you're, that you're, that's going to, oh my gosh, this is going to wear off a 308?
Yes, ma'am.
How heavy is it? It's pretty heavy, y'all. Show it to the people out there so they can see that. I can't believe that. That's going to wear off a 308.
I'm thinking of...
Look at it.
It, it, the way it's built, it's made to absorb. So, I mean, it's not going to go through. It just absorbs it across the material.
Yeah, because, you know, we just heard about the University of Virginia, three football players. That was awful. And I doubt if nothing happened. It's not going to happen. It's going to play the way.
Yeah, and the glass is a little, I think, too easy to stick, so.
My goodness.
Same thing they put on these, anything like that. It's on.
And the reason why, you know, let the taxpayer see that, you know, that way when they see it and they hear these questions and these answers, it justifies, justifies the means, so to speak.
We haven't highlighted it a lot because we, we like to have a few secrets, you know, if you need to use something. But, again, you see it. It's kind of a shame that we got to have that kind of stuff, but it's just the reality that we live in now.
Yes, it is.
It is. And like I said, they transitioned, used to be it was handgun, now it's rifle. You know, AR-15s are rifle that everybody has, and that's kind of the gun of choice now. So, we got to change.
Will it, will it deflect an AR-15?
Yes, ma'am.
AR-45? All that? It's hard to believe because to me, it's not all that thick.
Our other ones are thinner. Yeah, the others will probably weigh like six, seven pounds and stop handgun ammo, but that's it.
I think I would have flexed in the first.
Yeah, you got what you need.
I get that.
Sir?
You got enough of them?
I think we wound up with five or six. I think the school was going to get a couple. So, I mean, we're going to try to have them strategically located and we're going to watch the manager so that they'll be able to use them if necessary.
That's good.
As a parent of a six-year-old, that makes me sleep better.
Don't hold back. Don't hold back.
That was we done.
Yeah, and what it tells you is we're not going to, we're not going to put up with it.
No, we're not going to put up with it. You know that. We're not going to put up with it.
We're not going to put up with it.
There's somewhere else for that bull. And I know that all of y'all have been to Sheriff's Office and seen stuff to do with Mr. Amoson. Maybe that time we'd love to have you come over and see what we're doing.
You will. Thanks.
And y'all as well, if you want to, whenever you're ready for a press.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
For the sheriff goes too far, commissioners. So, tomorrow at about 10:30, where am I, where am I, where am I, on my, item 11, page 21, Mr. Patterson, your building official, Ms. Courtney Banks, your zoning administrator, and I, we're going to meet with the sheriff and his staff tomorrow, and we're going to discuss the current travel trailer ordinance. The sheriff would like to point out, recommend some changes to the ordinance for you guys to consider, and that he feels that these changes will assist him in enforcing the ordinance, items on the ordinance a lot better. So, I will present the results from that meeting at your next meeting on December 6. But, we'll be out there at the sheriff's department tomorrow morning.
Okay.
All right?
Mr. Chairman, I meant to do this at the beginning of the meeting. I've got somebody very important here that I would like for y'all to recognize. Her being here, she traveled all the way from Levy County, and that is Commissioner, outgoing Commissioner Lily Rooks, who served 24 years in with the Levy County Commission. And she is responsible, like all of us are, for scrap, that road paving stuff, for scrap, SCOT, and the CIG, County Incentive Grant Program. So, Lily, stand up and let everybody see. This is Lily Rooks. Thank you for coming. She happens to be my best friend. I would just have to tell a story, excuse me for this, but this is, this is an auspicious day. I don't know if y'all realize it, but this is historic. This is historic up here. It's just, it just my, it blows my mind. But, myself and her and Commissioner Sue Suggs out of Gilchrist County, the legislature back in the 2000s, early 2000s, when they saw us three ladies come in the doors at the Capitol up there, they, they said, uh-oh, here comes the troublesome trio. Then, when Sue Suggs passed away unexpectedly, then they called myself and Commissioner Rooks the daresome duo. So, that's how the legislature perceived us back in the early 2000s. I wonder if they'll do it again, because I don't, I don't know what she's going to do, but I know I'm going to be here for the next four years to take care of people's business. But Lily, thank you so much, and you know, I love you. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Not a problem. Before we move on to the next thing, I will say, I'm really happy to see the presentation from the sheriff's department. Here's the thing, and we hope we never have to face bad times. Bad days come, but we know, also know the reality. Just in the time I've been serving on the board, we went from the Lime Rock Road wildfire where 40 residents lost their homes, or 40 families lost their homes, Hurricane Michael, which was a Cat Five. We all dealt with a worldwide pandemic, and you never know what's going to happen on any given day. So, being prepared, emergency preparedness and response is on the top of the list. And you, you can't be ready for that day if you're not ready for it every day. So, I'm just glad we're able to move forward with that at the sheriff's department. And I just wanted to state that before we went forward. Up next, Superintendent Howard Neighbors, Roads and Bridges.
Good morning, commissioners. How y'all doing?
Doing good.
I've got no action item, but I want to welcome the new commissioners back, or Cheryl back and Mr. Commissioner Amoson. Welcome. Look forward to working with y'all. That some of the stuff that we talked last board meeting, some of the signs and stuff on West Pine, we got that stuff up.
Yes.
Still got the right of ways and stuff we got to cut back. We hadn't got there yet. So, but we will in C-30. I got the email on it, and we got some stuff ordered for the stop sign, rebel strip, stop ahead. So, that's next on the list.
Thank y'all for doing that, Mr. Howard, and thank you for keeping us updated on where it's at. So, I do appreciate that. Anyone have any thoughts or concerns for Mr. Neighbors?
I do.
Okay.
Um, Howard, on the average, how many inmates are you getting?
Uh, anywhere from maybe six to eight inmates per day. We had seven this morning. Yes, ma'am.
Is that, is that the reason why you kind of backlog on your work?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I remember back in the day, and I'm just going back for a little history because I am the historian, period, everybody says. But, my thing was, we had a labor crew that couldn't take care, that took care of those kinds of things. It may come to it, and I'd be very much supportive of it, if, if we could get a labor crew together and go out there and do that stuff, because this is something that does not need to be put out. Those road signs don't need to be put out. The shoulders don't need to be put out. We've got some new roads in this county, and the way they're paved, you got to watch that shoulder, and you know how it'll break off with that new pavement.
Lot of shoulder work.
Yeah, a lot of shoulder work. So, this is something, Michael, I want, I want you to kind of get with Howard and try to see what we can work out and maybe possibly get a labor crew. And a labor crew is they get out there and do what the inmate used to do.
Okay.
And can't do, but you've got a lot of power mowers and all that that can get done.
Yeah. So, basically, what Commissioner Ward had talked about earlier is, I'm thinking it's the same thing. Basically, a temporary work group that we use in seasonal periods to get the jobs.
When we don't get the inmates, you can send that out there or something, because we can't let the work stop. The work has got to keep on going.
And all the commissioners has brought that up about, you know, trying to get us another work squad going, which back in the early 90s, when they first built that prison, you know, we was getting 40 inmates a day, which we had five, our crew, then we had two state crews, you know, coming out. So, it's dropped down from 40 to seven or eight a day. So...
Yeah.
The good thing is, Commissioner, for your research, what Virginia now does is basically puts a calendar on his report, letting you know how many inmates he's getting per day.
Yeah.
So, that's a good way to...
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I don't know if you all agree with me or not, but, but we got to get this work done.
Yep.
I mean, because, and like we always say, this county's 70 miles long. And, and so I told y'all, I come in here with a vision and a mission, and that is get the work done in the county. And so, I mean, in fact, I'm going to make a motion that we start looking into, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we start looking into the creation of a labor crew, what we call a labor crew. So, you won't give it some other name to make it sound better. It don't matter to me. But, it's somebody that when we do not have crews out of the prison, inmates out of the prison, that the work can still be done.
So, are we talking about like part-time labor?
Yeah, basically a part-time crew that we can use. I was saying, I look at Aaron as I said, that we'll have to look at a budget, because we're going to be using him all the time. We're not getting the inmates Howard just said we used to get. So, it's not, it's kind of hard to say part-time. And I know Commissioner Ward, you had talked about, well, maybe we use them more in the summer, less in the winter. Yeah, so we'll have to come up with a, basically a plan and a budget to let you guys know. We're going to have to find the funding from somewhere. It wasn't budgeted for this year.
Well, and you know, and you know, the thing about it is, if you start now, and the majority of the work you need is in the springtime, late springtime, summer, then if you start now, you'll have it done by that time, and it'll get done.
Yep.
Yeah, we could pursue like a part-time seasonal, you know, less than six months duration.
And, you know, possibly do something along those lines.
I don't know. To me, if we need it, we need it. And, and I mean... And, and I mean, that, that's the way I go. I'm not trying to step on their back oos here, but, I mean, that, when I sat at last meeting and Commissioner Ward brought it up, I said, she's got the right idea. Because you know that that's how we did, and for a long time.
And our, our biggest thing, Commissioner, to the county is, is ditches. The grass cutting, and the ditches, you know, what, what kills us, though.
And I can tell you, back then, it was hoe handles, shovel handles, and rake handles.
And bush axes.
And yeah, bush axes, big time. But now you've got that machine rake stuff you can get that does all that.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we do have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders?
I'll second with comment.
Can we have a second by Commissioner Ward?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I, I echo Commissioner Sanders' opinion, because I've been, I've, I think at multiple meetings in the past, I've brought up the same issue. That we don't need to let our citizens, um, be underserved or disserviced because we don't have the inmates to do the work. And again, like I said at last meeting, it's not your fault, Mr. Howard, not many means. It's just the situation. Um, but we do need to prepare and plan for in the future that our, our citizens don't get disserviced by, by that. So, um, to, to with that, you know, I second Commissioner Sanders' motion.
Now, which labor crew, which I was on the labor crew back then, about years ago. And, uh, now, if we did labor crew, would you want full-time or part-time? How would you?
That's what they're talking about.
Okay.
We've got, three of us have to sit down and come up with a plan because we have to get funding, secure the funding, and bring it to the board.
That's what my motion was.
But about, you know, especially on the ditch cutting, it goes about eight months out of the year. So that's what I was saying.
Yeah. So maybe we rotate, but we will. We'll have to sit down and look at it and see.
And also, Howard, the backhoe, did we, the back, the backhoe that was approved during budget?
Yeah, we still, we got a small mini excavator we got that we checked into, which has also got the mower head on it, that, that also helped. And then we got our bigger machine, which it has to be a big ditch to get in it into because the, because the cutter on it's so big, so. Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, and Howard, now, I mean, you go a long way back, and you know that.
Mm-hmm.
It's nothing that y'all aren't doing.
Yeah, we just shoulder, shoulder the inmates, basically.
That's right. We've been accustomed, this county's been accustomed to having all the rights and privileges to have inmates that work. But now it's not getting done, and it's got to get done.
And the way that I hear it, it's not going to get no better, I mean, for inmate situations, so.
You know.
Commissioner Lawton?
This could be a quick fix. I mean, you can take, and you can have enough hired for the whole week, where they can be on part-time status. Some will work the first part of the week.
Right.
Some will work the second part of the week. Rotate them around.
Because, because he may get a.
Take it up.
Yeah, he may get a, a inmate crew today, but may not have one tomorrow or Thursday or something like that, so.
Yeah, but you still have enough, I mean, have enough where you can, they'll be there, but they won't be there, but they, they won't be for the hour.
Yeah.
Sad to say, but most people aren't looking for a full-time job.
Exactly. That's, that's going to be the second, is hiring somebody.
They'll be hungry, get people.
I hate to put it this way, the way of the world today.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah, one, one other thing with that, I, I remember catching a few meetings back, I'm not sure which, which one it was, but it was brought up about, uh, criminal history. You know, I can understand they can't be around inmates, the state has regulations or whatnot. You can probably clarify, can you?
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, that, that, you can, is there any way we could, you know, amend that to where when we don't have inmates around, you know, that, 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 that may open up an area right there where people, you know, freshly coming back into society, they, they may be more motivated to get out there and get a job and be productive, more so than people that's been sitting around, not, you know.
And that, and that come up last time, and you know, being, in other words, when we hire somebody, we have to get through the sheriff's department and also the prison, you know, to check their record. So, you know, if our record, if the state, the prison don't pass that, say, look, he don't pass our qualification, then basically, they can't be around inmates.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. If you've got, uh, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you're picking up, say, six, you've got a crew on the west end of the county. You know, you can have the, uh, part-time labor work crew, whatever we're going to label this. But that, that, is it, is it a cri, is it a hiring criteria period that if they have any criminal history that they can't work within the county? Is that what I'm, is what I'm saying?
With the, with the road department or parts and wrecks, I think.
So I mean, that's just, that's in general with any, anybody that applies.
Correct. Unless the prison passes, they say, yeah, he's good, and the jail also runs a background on him, so.
No, no, Howard, I think what the commissioner is asking, if you have a crew that, that are not around inmates.
Correct.
You know, do they still have to go through the prison?
Well, no, that would be left up to the board now.
That's what I'm intending, I think.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, that would be.
If, if, does, does everyone that applies with the road department, so to speak, part-time or full-time, have to pass this criteria with the sheriff's department and the, and the state?
In the, in the state, correct.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah.
Only the ones that supervise inmates, not, not every single one of you.
No, anybody I hire has to go.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yeah, everybody, anybody I hire has to go, uh, because we all inmate certified. Everybody has to be inmate certified that works with the county, road department.
We have to look at restructuring that and something.
Secretary?
And that is.
Yeah.
Why didn't some kind of?
Realize that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the challenge, and that's why I was trying to kind of play devil's advocate with it. I mean, I'm all for it, obviously, but is there anybody that we can communicate with on a state level? And show them what our, you know, I mean, I understand that they have a standard, but they also have to understand that not every county's needs are the same and identical. We have different challenges, so to speak.
But if it's part-time, then you just have to keep them away from inmates.
Those people don't.
But, but that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah. Yeah.
Technically, we can, we could do that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's why, that's why I'm trying to get clarity on.
Correct.
On whether or not, you know, part-time has to pass this, this background check.
Not part-time. You hire, hire part-time, and it'd be, you know, left up to the commissioner. But that part-time, you know, you couldn't have the inmates around the part-time people.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Well.
I got your, I got your point.
Another point that I just thought about, the sheriff's office, they've been doing the bridge cleanup. It may be possible, I know they can't, can't use anybody that has not already been sentenced. You know, they have to be sentenced and serving time. Maybe something we can work with the sheriff's department on, they can do.
Yes.
So, I mean, there, there's a lot of.
We tried, we tried that, but I'll, I'll, I'll talk to them tomorrow when I go out there.
Okay, that's something.
Well, I see a lot of, I see a lot of them kind of hiring people that been approved. Big accounting. I don't talk to people. These people are Panama, Tallahassee and stuff. And they got rest, but they done their thing. I don't understand why they putting all the strain on the little kind of like this.
I agree with you. I just didn't, my question was, was, is that, you know, in general, with anybody you hire, part-time or full-time, is they had to pass these background checks? Because that, that would be the obstacle, and if that's the case, maybe we could reach out to the state or whatnot, and, and present what our special challenges and needs for our area is, and maybe we could get some type of lenience, I guess, to the rule, if that, that makes sense.
Yes, yes.
I'm with you, Commissioner, because I, I hear what you're saying. Maybe we could tell the state, look, we're going to have two different set of employees here. One that work with your inmates and one that said that don't.
Right.
So the ones that don't, we don't want to have to go through this red tape of all these background checks and approvals, so, and see what they say. I, I, I guess that's what you're telling me, right?
Yeah, that's exactly.
You may have to, I don't know, Mr. Mr. Shury, can tell, we may have to amend the policies. Some of the policies and all of that.
Quickly glancing through your policy right now to see. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I thought, that's what I said. I know how our policies are set up with the road department. You may have to amend the policy.
I think that's actually a department-specific policy.
Department?
Yeah, yeah, because like certain departments, um, other departments don't have inmate certification. So back in the day, it was important for everyone to be inmate certified when they were getting, you know, the inmate counts of forty people. But times have changed, and if you're only getting six, then you can definitely do away with that requirement.
We got to look at his particular policy. Okay, that's what we'll do. Leonard Carson, yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. Senator Labor Attorney.
I think we've spoken, we've talked this one out. Do you have a motion to second? I want to restate what I believe the motion was, so we know what we're voting on. So the motion was made to, between yourself, Ms. Griffin, and Mr. Neighbors, to get together to find out what you can bring back to us. Where you can take action on either hiring, temporary help, part-time help, however you want to call it, so we can relieve the stress that's coming our way because of lack of inmates.
Correct.
Correct. Well stated, sir.
I just want to make sure that's what we're voting on.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm sure the clerk secretary is really glad for that.
Any more discussion before we vote?
Before you vote, uh, this wasn't on the agenda, so you might want to ask some public comments.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to publicly comment on this since it was not on our agenda? We have one, sir.
Will Kendrick, and I, I'm Ken Sherrill, so I can't sit back there and keep my mouth shut. If y'all are serious about the, the work camp, the inmates, and getting work done, what you should be doing is putting pressure on your legislative delegation to bring up in that work camp to crack them. That's what really needs to happen. If there was more collaboration and more cooperation between the county, the school, and corrections, that facility would still be open today. But because they couldn't get the employment numbers there, that that's closed. If those employment numbers were there, you would have the work camp numbers that you need. So I just give that food for thought.
Thank you.
And just to add, well, y'all notified that closed down the Franklin Work Camp?
I think we were, Commissioner, because Howard, myself, and Fonda went out there, we had a meeting with the.
Okay.
And he.
I hadn't heard it in no meeting, that's the reason why I've asked, for the past, you know, since April.
We had a long discussion about.
March or April.
We keep everything cut out there still, the grass and all, but a lot of roofs and everything's filling in. A lot of, some's got metal roofs, but the one that's got the plywood roofs is all sunk in, filling in, so.
Out there at the prison?
I'm talking about Franklin, I'm talking about out here.
At the work camp.
The old work camp, Franklin.
He, he, no, uh-uh. We're talking about the work camp over at Franklin CI.
Okay, okay.
The one, the brand-new building that's closed.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Yeah, two or three sections they've shut down, so.
Yeah, that's what, remember, we were talking about it when we out there with this board, yes.
Mr. Maron, anybody online?
Oh, anybody online would like to address, uh, the board on this item? Please do indicate by raising your hand.
No hands raised. Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else for Mr. Neighbors?
Yeah, yeah, with the gentleman here and, and, uh, with the engineer that we met on the ditch digging it. Either way you go, we try to drain that water, it's going to be, I mean, even if they give a easement, you go on private property and basically draining a pond, uh, two Bay City roads, and they probably, I want to say four, maybe five culverts would have to be dug up and lowered. The other option is, is cut the pavement in two, so. Or then you got Bluff Road, which if you run it that way, we've had everything marked there before, and you got just all kind of lines, water, sewer, and stuff like that, so. I'm not sure which way that we want to try to bring that ditch to, try to drain that water.
Now, when you say cutting pavement, are you talking about cutting across the road, so you can put a covert pipe across the road?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Just to clarify.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I got one more question. I'm going to leave you alone.
No, no, go ahead.
The terminology, striping the road, that's the lines, correct?
Yes.
All right, because I might have to call you. We got some, and, and the reason I say that, is out there on Squire Road, we got some very deep ditches to go down through there, and we got some elderly people that, that, they, they don't have a line, and they, they worried that they're going to hit the ditch, you know, turning in later on, uh, in the evening.
Yeah.
And it's been brought to my attention a few times, and I rode down there and looked, and, and, uh, and, and that's just something I need to.
Okay, we. We ain't got nothing to paint with, but we usually contract it out, uh, with, with the trucks, you know, they got trucks that kind of spays that stuff pretty quick, but I don't know.
I don't know if that was appropriate to ship in there like that with that, but I just, it was something while we were talking about roads and pop them on.
Okay, but I know they got, uh, Bayview Drive and Oyster Road, which has been repaid, that they got to come in and strip. So that truck will be here, so I don't know what they charge, so.
Yeah, and we, we can actually get a change order with Robertson Roberts to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll request a quote.
Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Neighbors.
Thank y'all.
Uh, Silois Director, Mr. Fonda Davis, you are next, sir.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Congratulations, commissioners.
I have nothing to report this morning.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do, Fonda.
Okay.
Yes, you do.
What's that, Commissioner?
Our teeny boys won the Super Bowl.
Okay.
The two thousand twenty-two Big Ben Football Champions.
That's right. Thank you for that.
And I'm going to, hey, y'all save your applause. I'm going to make a motion right now that we bring the two teams in, one lost, and one won the Super Bowl, but bring them at the next meeting in to be recognized and let them present the trophy to the county, like we always have.
Let me win a new motion for that. That's simple direction.
You sure?
Yep, I'm sure.
Okay, because I know we used to do it by motion.
Wait a second.
I said that's something, Fonda, and I can handle together.
Okay. All right.
What age is that, Commissioner?
Uh.
What ages was it?
Uh, it's a teeny.
Teeny's six to nine, right?
Nine?
Yeah.
Nine, I think, because on the mind, eight.
It might be six, eight, or.
But they got the Super Bowl, the Big Ben Super Bowl, that's big.
Okay.
I mean, they beat We walk again.
Right.
You know, I'm telling you, it was good. But that's what I've been doing in my retirement life, is following the football games and stuff.
Well, one of those teams was undefeated all year, wasn't it?
That was the team, the talking.
That's pretty good.
The teeny.
On any level.
The teeny.
Anybody have anything else for Mr. Davis, while he's here?
Wait a second, Commissioner.
I was asking if they had anything else for you while they were here.
I do. Um, Kendrick Park over there? We got to work on that press box over at the football field.
Okay.
Uh, when you get time, I'm going to talk to you about it. I'm not going to waste no time today. And, uh, because this is going to be a long meeting, but I do want to get with you, and, and because there's some stuff that I had in the pipeline when I left here that was for, for the Carabel area, and none of it seemed to go through. So I want to find out what happened with the process and where it got hung up at.
You say, how's commissioners? Mr. Davis, thank you. Thank you for everything you all do for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Uh, Ms. Pam Brunel, Emergency Management?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, don't really know if this is an action item or informational item for y'all, but, uh, um, I want to take this opportunity to thank this board for giving me the opportunity to serve you for seventeen years. Cheryl, you and Noah are the only two setting commissioners that appointed, appointed me at that time. And I thank you so much for believing in me, and Cheryl, for you being my mentor.
Bless your heart. It's okay, Pam. It's okay. We did well in getting you. We did very well in getting you.
Well, I want to tell you something. There's nothing like trial by fire. When Butch left, it was one thing after the other, and I kept asking myself, who has the voodoo doll? Because it was just, it was just, when it rains, it pours.
Right.
It was one thing after another, and then, of course, you know, Mike left me in the middle of, my coordinator in the middle of season. I made it through with the help of my office admin, special needs. We made it through the season, and then we, uh, set out to hire new employees. Give me a, just give me a second. Our program has gone so far since Butch left.[1723.32] And I know that it will go even further, especially with the technologies and the things, the training and the support that we have. Our office is not really like any other county office. You can't just pluck somebody off the street and set them in as a director. There's all kind of training and certificates that go into this county being able to get the funding that basically funds this, that office. There's all kind of certificates, you have to have your professional development series, EM Academy. What I would like to see for the board to do is to consider moving Ms. Jennifer Daniels, she is Deputy Director. In her, excuse me, if you look at our job description, Jennifer is already Deputy Director, meaning if I'm, say, had to go to the hospital, had to have surgery or something, Jennifer automatically steps into that role. She becomes the Director in my absence. So she's been here with me for nine years. This last year, I guess y'all have all noticed, I've sort of stood back to see if she was gonna be able to do the job. I've came to work since 2013, every day in pain, every day with my back. And if I thought Jennifer Daniels could not do the job, I would hang in there until I knew she could. But I know that she can, and I'm tired, and I'm tired of coming to work hurting. And I want to ask the board to consider making Jennifer Daniels the Emergency Director. She will do you a fantastic job and move this office further than it's ever been.
So promote what you're asking us to do as the department head, it's what we've done before in the past from time to time, and that is to promote the one that's up underneath you to that position, and then we advertise those lower positions, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, Jennifer will advertise for her coordinating position.
I'm not been here nearly as long as you have, so please make sure I understand. With that, we have the ability to appoint, or you said we have the ability to appoint department heads?
We promote them up.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
We promote them up, not a point, but promoting them.
Okay.
On the, on the recommendation of the department head, I know Dan recommended several people. How, Hubert Chipman did, he recommended Howard, and I mean...
With Howard, Commissioner, did we have, where we had Howard and Dewitt before the board? We did?
But you see who's sitting there.
No, I, I know, I know.
That's what I'm saying, you see who's sitting there.
What I'm expressing, Commissioner, is that, I, I agree with Pam about Jennifer, don't take this any way, I don't think there's anybody in the county more qualified, you know, in the county staff, you know?
I mean, this is time for discussion, though, this is what we do, we discuss them.
Just for, for, for the future, what I would recommend, at least at a minimum, which, again, I don't see anybody that will fit the criteria besides Jennifer, we do it internal, like what we've done in the past, an internal ad. I do also recommend, Pam, and I don't want, I'm not trying to get into your personal bit, are you gonna be taking time off like after today? So I guess my question is, will Jennifer be there alone, because if she will be, I'd recommend that you guys, on an interim basis, appoint Jennifer. That would be my recommendation to the board.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why I asked her what I did.
Yes, if you go through, you go through a couple of weeks of what we call internal advertising, because that's what the policy calls for. It says you give your employees the chance, any qualified employees, a chance to get any positions that you have. I think it's on page sixteen, it might be the second paragraph down, I believe. So, I'm sorry, you know, I just, so, I do, I think if, you know, if Pam is gonna take any time off between today and her last day, is there a way we could give an interim-type, because, look, look, Commissioners, I do not want to be the one responsible for ELC, I'm sorry, I'm just being very honest with you guys, I didn't want to deal with TDC, I don't want to deal with ELC. So if you guys, if there's any way this board would see fit to at least give her an interim position, you do an internal advertisement, you could do it for twelve days, by the end of the month, by the next meeting, you'll know if anybody else advertised, if not, we proceed.
Michael.
I'm back, please.
Her job description already makes her that. I do not plan on taking any time off, maybe the last two weeks before Christmas, I will still be your Red Director. I will be at home, it's no different than if I take a regular, regular vacation.
I just didn't know if you would use, can you leave between now and then?
I've got about two weeks.
Oh, okay.
And I'll use that at Christmas.
Yeah.
So, again, it doesn't matter, she is already your interim director, and I'm not here.
That's, that's pretty much an easy fix.
I'll go ahead.
This is pretty much an easy fix, since you're not gonna be gone, we don't have to make a motion for an interim position, we can go ahead and advertise interim.
Yep.
That way we're legally, and go from there.
What, what I need to know, Ms. Pam, you finna retire, right?
I'm gonna retire, my official retirement date is January the second of 2023.
Okay, January the second. But you've got time to burn.
I've got, I've got about two weeks extra time, so.
You've got a lot of time you need to, or you're gonna lose it, right?
It, I've got about two weeks, so I'm gonna lose that two weeks. But, again, I will still be no different than taking a vacation.
Yeah, I know.
I will still be your Director. Jenny can still get a hold of me if something comes up, but in her job description, if I am unavailable, then Jenny steps in as Acting Director, that's in her job description.
Works me.
So we've not already had any motions yet?
No, no.
I'll make a motion.
I think I, so to go ahead and just do an internal...
How, how many days, twelve?
Yeah, I mean, what's the, what's, I'm sorry, what's the last day of, what's the last Friday of the month? Because we meet on the sixth, so whatever your calendar says, I don't have my phone in front of me.
It'll be the second, that's what I can...
The second?
It'll be the second.
Yeah, we run an ad, close them on the second, internally, just, this, now, this applies to county, your county employees only, it does not apply to constitutional employees, this is just your county employees. And they have to meet the qualifications, if they don't, then they, you know, and then if that, we, I would say on the sixth, we make our decision then and we proceed. And at that point, if, if that is the case, then yes, then you do fill the next slot up on the sixth, so that they're enough, they only have three people in that office. So we would need to be working on getting that, that other position filled ASAP on the sixth. So I'll be, you know, basically I'll be asking you all for two motions, one, to make the appointment, and two, to fill the empty slot.
And then also to advertise for, you know, there'll be a third vacancy, so it will actually be, you know, because there's Jenny, Amanda, and Pam, so there's also gonna be a...
So we have to, yes.
Your third person would be the vacancy.
But, I'll ask you that.
Structurally, yeah.
There's a question I want to ask about the Director being able to promote within the department without having to advertise, but I'll get with Erin about that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say, the policy, what does the policy say?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's why we have policies.
Yes.
I mean, no, no, not right now, which is, well, I mean, I agree, I think Jennifer's duly qualified, and, and I will, I know we're, there is a motion on the floor, correct?
Yes.
I will second Commissioner Amison's motion.
And that, that motion was to, for the...
Advertise internally.
Advertise internally.
Internally.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
All right. Or you're gonna advertise for two positions?
Can we, can you, I suppose, second, we amend that motion, if we're gonna do it, sir?
Just to make it clear.
Yeah, and I, kind of we want to make it look like we're submitting something, so I'll just...
If you're gonna move a Director, you've got to get somebody to take up place.
Yes, we will, I know, we will on the sixth.
Somebody to take somebody, please. It's still gonna be, it's gonna be two of them.
It'll be two positions?
Yes, I think once you appoint a Director... Yes, internally.
Could advertise both internally at the same time.
Okay, I'll advertise both internally, to save some time.
Okay, so you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, we can amend that motion, we can just...
Yes, amend it, if you don't mind, just amend that motion.
Would you amend your second?
I will amend my second.
Both positions internally.
See, this is good discussion right here.
So we're advertising on both of these internally?
Yeah.
Both of those positions, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Now, is any, is any other thing, would this need to be handled now, or can it be handled on the...
It can be handled on the sixth, anything after this, yes. Mr. Chairman, if I kind of go out on the limb here, put all this aside, Pam, thank you for all what you've done to the county for all these years.
She ain't gone yet.
And again, thank the board for giving me the opportunity to serve you and to serve the citizens of this county, regardless of what a lot of people think about me, I do care about the citizens in this county, and that is why I have stayed, to make sure that there is a qualified Director coming in.
Ms. Pam, I know today is not the final day, but I cannot let this moment slip. Somebody asked me recently about decisions made about voluntary evacuations and different stuff, and I said, "Look, I got a question for you." I said, "Have you ever made a decision for every resident and visitor in the county at the same time?" And I said, "You know, not being disrespectful, but until you do, maybe you shouldn't criticize, because I, I believe this board, we always have, are gonna err on the side of caution, because we are tasked with the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens." So, you know, but I have learned that interacting with you since I've been on this board, so thank you for that.
Actually, Commissioner, during, Nicole, we actually did a little Facebook post, sort of an education for the residents, explaining to them why we do the things that we do.
Right.
And, you know, our job is to advise y'all with the data that we have, and then y'all make the final decision. And again, nobody has a crystal ball, it's just, it's working with what the Weather Service gives you, and they don't have a crystal ball either.
And you have to prepare for the worst to hope for the best.
Yes, sir.
Also.
Yes, sir.
But you've done a masterful job of that, and thank you for that. All right, Mr. Eric Lovestrain? Extension Office Director for IFUS.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Welcome to the Board, Commissioner Amison.
Nice.
Nice to have you, and welcome back, Commissioner Sanders.
Hi, Mr. Eric, how you been doing?
Doing pretty good. I had one item, just as an update, that didn't make it into my written report. You probably remember that we try to sponsor the Peanut Butter Challenge every year in the county, and that's a project that all of the extension offices take up each year across the Panhandle, and there's even some counties now down central and south Florida that have picked up on that. And again, this year, we had a student at the Franklin County High School that took this on as a senior honors project as part of his membership in the National Honor Society there, that was Mr. River Sheridan. And he worked with the teachers and the classes to get boxes and collection stations set up, and he told me the other day that they collected eighty-eight hundred ounces of peanut butter at just the Franklin County High School. That's about five hundred and fifty pounds of peanut butter. And that peanut butter that we collect there, and at a few other smaller collection sites throughout the county, will get matched by the North Florida peanut producers, so we will have over a thousand pounds of peanut butter that we will distribute to the local food banks here in Franklin County. That's really a good project, and it's been picked up by the school in a really good way over the last couple of years, so we're proud of that. And that's all I had for you today.
Commissioners, y'all have any questions for Mr. Eric while he's here? Mr. Eric, that's a very good story that you brought to us that we have not otherwise known about, so it is important, especially the time of year we're getting into. It is very important to make sure that we're helping to take care of our neighbors, so the food banks are very important.
When we get the total amount, I'll give you guys the number, because it's gonna be more than double that amount.
Thank you, sir.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Dewitt Polis, I understand he's via Zoom technology, there you are, Mr. Polis.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd just take this opportunity to welcome Commissioner Amison and Commissioner Sanders back to the board. Don't have any action items this morning. I just, informational, we, we do plan on starting our ditch maintenance program the twenty-ninth of November. I have talked to the President, and they're trying to, you know, give me at least three inmates, but we'll see what happens there in the same situation Howard's in. But if there's anything you need, or, you know, just let me know, we'll start that the twenty-ninth, like I said, and get that going.
Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Polis this morning? That background, tell ahead.
I don't think he heard you, Commissioner. Dewitt, he's asking you, where are you at?
I'm over on Palm Coast, south of St. Augustine, down here at the FMCA Annual Meeting.
Cool.
Step, stepped outside, tried to find a little privacy, it's pretty busy inside, so that's why I'm sitting outside, so I can hear you guys.
Nice background.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dewitt, for what you do.
Yeah, thank you, sir, we appreciate you. Interim Airport Manager, Mr. Ted Mosteller.
Good morning, Commissioners, Stan, and welcome to the, congratulate the new Commissioners. I don't have anything per se to action this morning, other than what Mike will bring up shortly, but I do have a few notes, thanks to Howard for his team for getting our Batwing mower in Tallahassee, especially. And Stan has the new mower hooked up to the JD fifty-five, fifty, hitch six twenty-five already, and it's in service. We do need a new hitch pin, which I have on order, and new blades for the old mower. I did attend the conference that John held about the Fuel Farm Project, pre-bid conference on Tuesday, the eighth, and we only had one participant at that point, but he informed me yesterday that he has about four potential bidders lined up. The bids are due December second and will be open the sixth. And the rest of it is in my report to you.
Finish?
You have...
Yep. You let me know when you're ready for me to go.
I'm ready.
Ready, okay, Commissioners, page nineteen, item two. At your September sixth meeting, the board opened and read aloud bids for the airport obstruction removal project. At your following meeting, on the twentieth, Mr. Collins of AFCON, John Collins of AFCON recommended, wrong word, the board awarded a contract to the lowest responsive bidder, that was his recommendation, and the board awarded the contract, which was Collins Land Service out of Tallahassee. Today, for the chairman's signature, I have the notice to proceed for this project, once signed, the completion date for this project will be January fifteenth. As a reminder, this project will clear the obstruction around runway one eight, therefore reopening, reopening that runway. Mr. Collins is still finalizing the total obstruction removal project, and when I say total, there's a second funding from FAA that we're working on to remove all the obstruction of trees from the entire airport. We have an inventory that was done from all the trees, and we're working on that, it's just that FAA just, you know, you have to submit this, and it waits. I mean, that, I think they've moved the funding to July, Ted, for the total obstruction removal. Yeah, but John has all, John Collins has all the pre-application, all the documentation is in there, so we're on FAA's timeline to do the bigger project.
And that, that's the instructions between the runways, line of sight, Mr. Mosteller?
Yes.
Yes.
And also at the, some of the other approaches to other runways. There is a multitude of stages to go through to get them, to get all the bed station down, all the flight instructions.
And now that, just so I got clarity, what he's talking about here on today is just...
Because the runway one eight, yes, sir.
The north-south.
Yes, sir, and then, yes.
Local turn.
There you go, sorry, yes, the north, and then the second part of the project will be a total obstruction removal, which Ted and John basically, they determine what's, what's to be removed, and they submit that to FAA, correct?
Well, they gotta have a line of sight for departure and...
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I got you.
Good.
This first phase will open our runway one eight approach, so hopefully.
So the north-south's being funded by FAA?
Yeah, yeah, it's two different grants, yes.
So we're just basically waiting on them?
Yeah, well, if you sign this today, this one is ready to go to open back up the runway.
How much money are we talking about, just to clear the north-south?
One fifty, one, geez.
I don't have that figure in my head, but it's in that neighborhood.
I'll get it for you, I think it's one, so I don't think it's over two hundred thousand, Commissioner, I don't. To want to do the entire airport is about nine hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken, mistaken. To want to do the entire airport is about 900,000, if I'm not mistaken.
Considerably higher.
Yeah, considerably higher.
So, that'd be 900,000 minus 150?
I don't think it's quite that high.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to think.
Negotiate.
Well, yeah, with FAA's money. Yeah, I'll get the figures for you, Commissioner, exactly what they are for the project, the two separate projects. But I think they're funded separately, and so we're able to do this one immediately and then do the total removal here come July 1st, the state's new year, fiscal year, to get it done. They'll release the funds then, but we can do everything right up to that date. So, after that, the money's released, we on with the project.
So, just for north and south, we're waiting, we're hurry up, wait FAA, pretty much? It's got a...
Yeah, for the entire project. But for runway 18, this is going to start a soon sign-up notice, proceed today, and it'll be finished by January.
Okay.
If not sooner.
All right. That's what I was getting at.
Good.
Any other possible questions I could answer?
600,000?
Michael, we need a motion on that.
Yes. Please authorize your signature on the notice to proceed.
Motion of the Board?
I'll make the motion. Can we sign?
Okay. I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison. Second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion, Commissioners, before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Yeah, Commissioner Amison, I think it's six for the total and about two for this project, but I'll get those numbers.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you would like to take a break, and we come back and start the public hearings at...
We do have a time, time since...
We have to 10:30. We have to start at 10:30.
Okay. Unless we say till 10:30.
We understand that managing a healthy lifestyle while balancing life's other demands can be challenging at times. So, the Florida Department of Health in Franklin County is dedicated to supporting you as you take care of your health. We offer many resources and services, including, but not limited to, COVID-19 vaccines, breast and cervical cancer screens, tobacco prevention and sensation education, and information on heart health, nutrition, and physical activity. Maintaining a healthy lifestyle can help to prevent chronic conditions like heart disease and stroke, diabetes, COPD, and obesity. Healthy lifestyle changes can also help you maintain a healthy immune system. Tips to good health include eating a healthy diet, being physically active, avoiding tobacco and excessive alcohol, managing stress effectively, getting enough sleep, and seeing your medical provider for routine checkups.
To find out more about how we can help you maintain a healthier lifestyle, please visit franklin.floordhealth.gov or call 850-653-2111.
Hi, I'm Carol Landis. I'm a professional Realtor in love with St. George Island. When my husband and I and our dogs moved here in 2002, it was the beginning of an adventure that has never grown old in a community that is amazing. If you're thinking about moving to St. George Island or investing in our world-class real estate, then this community will be as important to you as the sand and surf.
Well, Carol, to me, is much more than an agency. She's become a friend, and since we bought the house, we've needed work done, and she knows everybody there is that can help us with that.
One of the key elements for the historical growth and value of St. George Island real estate is the fact that it's a great place to vacation and to live. The beauty of the Gulf of Mexico with its white sand beaches and blue sky has always been a magnet for me. It was love at first sight. As your Realtor, I can help educate you on the various aspects of buying and owning coastal properties, from taxes to coastal setback lines to where to find the best oysters. It's all part of being your Realtor.
Too often, our friends tell us of it being a hardship to buy a house, and the agent was gone as soon as the closing. We've had quite the opposite experience with Carol.
If you're looking to buy or sell real estate on St. George Island, I'd love to work with you. Please call or text me at 850-653-7753.
Welcome to Southern Charm at its finest. A brick walkway leads to the inviting front porch of this beautifully restored three-bedroom, two-bath coastal cottage in the heart of the historic district in Appalachia Cola. It boasts hardwood floors, high ceilings, crown molding, tongue-in-groove walls, a clawfoot tub, antique fireplaces, and a renovated chef's kitchen, and so many extras. It's just a short walk to the bay and a quick golf cart ride to downtown Appalachia Cola. An estate retreat in the heart of Appalachia Cola's historic district, built in European beauty, enlarged in 1907. 12-foot ceilings, double parlor, back-to-back fireplaces, original hard pine floors stained in ebony, substantial gourmet kitchen with steam convection oven. This graceful Queen Anne Victorian overlooks Lafayette Park and Appalachia Cola Bay in the heart of the historic district. Was impeccably renovated with Cypress and hard pine, and this home was built in 1895 and also retains its original floors, Cypress walls, and ceilings.
We're your coastal real estate experts. Call us!
Fisherman's Choice Bait and Tackle has all you need for your day of fishing. They have fresh and saltwater bait, an unmatched selection of mirror lures, and a wide selection of Berkeley gulp, plus fresh and live bait, and all the rigs and tackle you need for a great day of fishing, including brands like Pin and Shimano. They are also the only bait and tackle shop in Franklin County where you can get a fishing license. And don't miss their wide selection of marine supplies, coolers, and more. Fisherman's Choice is located at 330 Highway 98 in East Point.
Yeah, we've got that. Fresh seafood? Got that, too. Historical landmarks? You bet. Fishing? Oh, yeah. But what do we have the others don't? This. And...
It is 10.03 acres, 11.45 and 11.49, and this will be able to have a dwelling on...
...appropriate for the Board to ask questions at this time.
Okay. Could we move on to public comment, correct?
Public comment, yes, sir.
Mr. Mills is not asking to divide this property.
Not much. We're trying to get them raised, but we're asking you, please don't put a burden on us where we cannot get to our homes, especially in bad weather. Now, like I said, this Mr. Mills, I don't have a problem with one house per 33 acres, if you can restrict it to that one house. But the 10-acre parcels, if he can do that one house. But the 10-acre parcels, if he can do anything with the other 10 acres, that's going to hurt us. You put three more, you put 10 more, you put 20 more, as I said, you're going to have it where we're all parked at Jeff Sanders Road, waiting on some tractor to pull us into our homes.
Thank you, Ms. Nita. Anyone else today wishing to comment publicly on this issue? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Craig Adams, and I live in Hickory, off of Hickory Hammock, too. Addressing this gentleman's property, I talked with Mark yesterday, and he printed out, which I meant to print this out for y'all, but he printed out, and most of that 32-acre track is wetlands. Only one house can be built up in this area, and he said that Roddenberry would have to come out and actually say how much, but he said it would take the state of Florida and a lot of money and time to be able to build these wetlands into something else, which probably wouldn't happen. I don't have any problem with this gentleman building one house, as long as I know that's what he's going to do. So, my proposal would be for him to get, come back again, present this with a deed restriction that says he is only going to build one house upon that. If that's possible, I don't know, this is my first time speaking, I've been trying to understand all the lingo that goes with this. I don't have a problem with him building, I don't think a lot of owned into three 10-acre tracks and then subbed about them, because like Nita said, that's just going to put more burden on us. So, I don't know how y'all want to think about that or what, but that was my proposal on it.
Okay. As far as I understand, all the Board can consider today is what's in front of us.
Right, so...
There might be discussions after that, but today, all we consider is what we're looking at.
Then my proposal would be to vote no today, and then let us talk with the gentleman, and maybe present it to y'all at another time, and go back through planning and zoning, and when the HOA and this gentleman all come to one accord. So, my suggestion today would be to vote no and put it at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. You can, but ma'am, that's why we ask you to present. What have you had to present? Come on.
I've got one on the line that's got his hand raised, too. I got one on the line that's got a hand raised.
Charlotte Schneider with Anchor Realty. I feel, because he really is only looking for one spot, and it seems like the HOA is with that, so we would request to withdraw this, so that we can reach out to the people that understanding about adding that to the deed, or if we needed just a variance stating we could build one house, et cetera, just to research what other measures we will need to take to be able to accomplish this for him.
So, Ms. Charlotte, you are going to withdraw it?
Absolutely, Ms. Cheryl. We are withdrawing.
Okay. Thank you.
Just thank you for your time.
Thank y'all so much. Not a problem.
So, just to make sure, Courtney, you did say somebody was on the line, but this applicant has withdrawn their request. So, just to make sure the person on line here knows what's going on in the room. All right, so now we move on to the next public hearing, correct, Attorney Short? Attorney Short, move on to the next public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Courtney, go ahead.
So, the next one... Let's pull that for you. Okay, so the next one is an ordinance rezoning a 50-acre parcel of land in Section 24 Township 6 South, range 4 West, from A2 Agricultural District to R6 Rural Residential. I also have the zoning map pulled up, so you can see the area and the parcel.
Hello. My name is Paige Joseph, and I'm also with Anchor Realty, and I represent the Schultz. They own 201 Beaver Drive that is also in Pine Coast Plantation. We are also requesting that the zoning be changed to 10-acre tracks for per one dwelling for home. We currently have 50 acres, and we have a potential buyer for 30 of those acres to put one single-family residential home on those 30 acres. However, he can't do that without the rezoning, just as the prior that withdrew. And we do also want to notate that with reducing the amount of acreage that is allowed per home brings more individuals into the community, which has more individuals that would be paying dues to help with roadways and things like that. So, once you reduce that home structure to, say, this one parcel that would only have one person paying dues, it would be two, three, four, or five persons paying dues, which would assist with that cost that is accumulating and being a burden to these current homeowners to kind of assist with that financially. Absolutely.
Yeah. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
The applicant also wanted to speak, Mr. Ricky, if she can.
Yes, sir. We bought the 50 acres, in fact, we bought 100 acres there with the intention of making it our home. And the HOA community was divided, if you will, the Board on what we were planning to do there. We took the pines down, they're not indigenous to that area, and of course, pines fall easily, they burn easily. So, we opened the land up to make way for our homestead. It was going to be a beautiful house there. And I have to say, this HOA is very dramatic, and a lot of people have had problems with them. Our intention in our leaving was to still be kind and loving to our neighbors, and that was to let this young man, he didn't want 50 acres, which we wanted to sell to him, but he wants 30 acres. So, in order to do that, Courtney suggested that we had to go from agricultural 40 acres to R6, so he can get the 30 acres to buy and build his homestead. He's a nice fellow. The community back here is really up in arms, but if you look at the map here, there are many, many places where there's not only R6, but there's even less than that. And so, this is not something that's new, it's not something that is changing in that community. And in fact, the roads are in poor shape. The HOA is in desperate shape by corruption and so forth. We just simply can't deal with it. So, I know they're back there heckling right now.
If you would, ma'am, please address the Board.
Forgive me, I'm not addressing them, I'm not. We still want to be in the best of, for our neighbors. We have neighbors there that we love and that are good people, and this young man simply wants to buy 30 acres and put his house on it. That's it. Thank you.
And we have a second potential buyer that is wanting to purchase the other 20 to put one house on 20. So, what our foreseeing future would be is one house on 20, one house on 30, but there's just not a zoning that allows that. So, that's why we asked for the R6 to drop it down to 10.
And please, one more thing. I think they're going to have a big fit about the pines coming down. What I want to say about that is, they suffocate the land, the hardwoods can't grow. So, now we cleared the land, we put, that took that money and put in 20, three 26-foot deep ponds that are clear and gorgeous, and they're ready for a new house, new homestead. So, it really is a nice property.
Thank you, we appreciate you. All right, up next, we will call for a public comment about this issue before the board.
Can I get this guy on the phone, because he's still got his hand raised?
Okay, that's fine. We'll do that in a minute. Anyone in the room wish to comment publicly? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Me.
Yes, that's fine.
Nita Molesby. Again, I'm going to give the same argument about the 10-acre lots. Once you put it into 30, there's nothing to stop that man from selling three 10-acre parcels. I don't know who he is. And the 20 acres, there's nothing to stop them from selling two 10-acre parcels. Now, what Ms. Schultz is trying to subdivide connects to my property in the back. We've had a lot of people out there that want 10 acres to hunt, because it is heavily wooded. I'm one of the few people out there that hasn't cut the pines off my property. I have a two-year-old, seven-year-old, eight-year-old, great-grandchildren that are with me about every other weekend, and you get a lot of people coming to 10 acres, they want to come in and hunt. They don't want to live out there, they want to hunt. Then after the hunting, they're going to hunt out on the roads, out on our property, then they're going to go back wherever they came from. I don't know what these people want, and I'm not trying to be as negative as Ms. Schultz. Give us time to, if they want 30 acres, give us time to make some, whatever it takes, rules, regulations, you doing something to give them one per 30. As I said, we don't have a problem with somebody wanting to build a house on 30 acres. But we've got to do something. She said it'll give us more money, the dues are $200 a year. $200 might buy, what, a third of a load of lime rock? So that's not going to help a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Yes, sir. Please go forward and state your name for the record.
My name's Craig Adams, and Elizabeth's property butts up to the back of mine and my wife's property, okay? I want to approach this in the beginning from a little bit different perspective. I'm from Georgia, I bought property in 2018. We moved down here, this is where I retired. I own 48, my wife and I own 40 acres. We moved down here in the middle of the forest to be on 40 acres. We didn't move down here to be surrounded by houses, that if R6 is allowed now, it's just going to be another and another, and pretty soon, my 40 acres is going to be a neighborhood, and that's not what I moved down here for. That's not what all these people that signed that petition and are here now.
Please address the board, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, and moved out here for. They moved out to be in the middle of the forest, to be on ag. I raise trees, I have ag. I hunt, I fish, I live off the land, as a lot of my friends do, and neighbors and everything. If you allow R6 to go on, then it's just, it's not going to stop. In the future, what we want to do as an HOA is meet and talk about how to change the covenants, is vote on it, so that we don't have to keep coming to y'all. Like Nita said, I don't mind somebody having a 30-acre track of land, but there's nothing to say that this gentleman, who probably is going to build just one house on 30 acres, might fall into hardship and say, you know what, I need money, so I'm going to sell, I'm going to sell it off. Same thing with the 20 acres. I've talked to Elizabeth, and I told her, I said, "Look, we don't have a problem with you living here, we liked you, you had some great ideas and stuff like that, but just sell the 50 acres off. Somebody out there is willing to buy it. If not, then I would say that y'all please vote no, and give the HOA time to talk with Elizabeth and some attorneys or whatever, and do a 30-acre track if that's what we want." But like I said before, maybe put in there a deed restriction where it cannot be subdivided. We have no problems with the 30 acres, it's what can be done after the fact, and if y'all vote R6, then it's too late. Those tracks of land can be divided whether we want it or not. So I would just ask y'all for my way of life, for my friends' and neighbors' way of life, that you don't vote R6 on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the room wanting to comment publicly? Yes, Ms. Kelly.
I'm sorry, it takes me a minute.
You're good. We're here for the duration, Ms. Ma'am.
Thank you. I promise not to take that long.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Mel Kelly, I live in Carabel with my family. I own 40 acres in the Hickory Hammock subdivision, which my son-in-law has spent many hours clearing, cultivating, creating ponds. He's a Dutch engineer at heart and knows what to do with the property. We have one of the few properties that does not flood when heavy rains come. I'm here asking you not to open the door for this additional rezoning. I have been involved in planning and zoning for many years, as I was in tourism, and I have seen what happens once the door opens, no matter how good the intentions are. And it is not the intention of our homeowner association to create a moat and pull up the drawbridge. That is not our intention. Our intention is to live with the original covenants under which we bought our property 20 years ago. And what is happening now is the door is being opened to change what we all, what we all bought, our property, under the covenants. I have copies of the bylaws, the amended covenants, and I ask that you respect our purchase from under those covenants of 20 years ago. I know others have not owned the property as long as we have, but I know what happens when you open the door to this kind of a change. I researched R6 very carefully, and the door that it opens is frightening to those of us property owners. I ask that you vote no on this rezoning, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Anyone else in the room, before we go to those that are attending by Zoom today? Yes, sir, please step forward, state your name for the record.
I'm James St. Clair. I'm president of the Pine Coast Association, and we have, of course, a bunch of 10-acre tracks that's already been in there, but it's just getting to the point, like where the road is where Elizabeth has at this time, it's in pretty bad shape itself. We put our amount of money that we had in our association, we usually keep about $20,000. Well, we made a ruling that we would stay at 10, in case, you know, we had a hurricane come in and tear our roads up and all that. We're down to 10 now. And I do the roads myself, and Craig, he helps me, and we do it for nothing. But when you get a load of base or anything now, it's $750. So if you got that more traffic in there, it just tears them roads up, it's getting so ridiculous. So we're at a stance there where we really don't need 10-acre tracks. Now, I agree with him, if we can get some solution like we did with the other one, where you can get one in the 30 and maybe one in 20, that's not as bad. But you know what I mean, if you get one person that moves in, and they got their family coming in, it's just, it's more, we've got twice the traffic right now than we had two years ago, from just different ones right now. And I know it's, it doesn't sound right to let somebody have a 10-acre track, and then somebody else not have a 10-acre track. I understand that clearly. But it's just come to the point to where we've got to stop this and be realistic with it, okay, that we can do something. So I'm asking you to vote no, and if we could get back with Elizabeth or whoever we need to, and do the same thing we're talking about on the other, I think that's the best thing to do.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a zoning that allows somewhere in between the 10 and the 40? Because we're under the impression that there's not. So like, I get where they're coming from, we respect it. Like, our buyers don't want anything different than what the HOA is wanting, but we were under the impression that there was not another zoning that allowed somewhere in between the 10 and the 40 range. So if we don't have it rezoned to the 10, even if, say, we all come to an agreement, HOA documents are changed, an addendum's done to the covenants and restrictions, if it's not R6, then what would, what I'm saying is, even if we change the covenants to say, you have to have 30 acres instead of 40, right? And then my buyer buys it, well, the county's going to tell him it's an unbuildable lot, because there's not 40 acres there. So is there a zoning that the county offers that would allow that change to happen, or does it just have to be R6 with 10-acre tracks, but the covenants and restrictions say that you have to have 30 in order to build?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The zoning code governs above whatever their bylaws. Their bylaws can't allow a size parcel that is smaller than is required by the zoning code. Your zoning code right now is either 40 or it's 10, so there is no option for a 30-acre parcel. Now, if there is a pre-existing lot of record, and I was just sitting here thinking about it during the presentation, if that pre-existing lot of record is less than 40, then it'd be grandfathered in, and it would be buildable at the 32 acres from the first public hearing, but I don't have that information in front of me right now. But right now, your zoning code is either 40 acres or it's 10 acres. There is nothing that allows for a 30-acre parcel under your current zoning code.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Does that help, Ms. Molesby?
It does. So I guess what I was, so I understand, like, their bylaws can't trump the zoning code. So if what we're asking, I guess, is if we were allowed to drop down to the R6 for the 10 acres, and then they could add into their covenants and restrictions that you can't just build on a 10-acre track, you have to build on 20 or better, 25 or better, 30, however they agree to. Is that, like, does that fix the problem, or is it 10 or 40, and that's it? It doesn't matter what's in their HOA?
It's 10 or 40, and I can't remember who the speaker was, but if you divide, say, the 50-acre tract into five 10-acre parcels, then they would be potentially buildable under your zoning code, as long as they can meet the setbacks and the wetlands, and you know, all the other building criteria. But they, they could potentially put a private restriction on their own property, but the county does not enforce private zoning code. So if someone comes to us, and they say, "I've got a 10-acre parcel, and it is otherwise buildable," we're not going to defer to whatever their restrictive covenants are. That just means they're going to end up in litigation among the parties, trying to figure out whether or not they could build on each one of those 10 acres or not. But the county's going to go by the zoning code, and if that is an R6, and it's a 10-acre unit, and it's otherwise buildable, the county will issue a building permit.
And that, Mr. Michael, that is the same things that are normally with any other HOA as well, right? Like, the county and cities do not enforce HOA covenants and restrictions, it is up to the HOA to enforce those items, correct?
The county does not enforce any private restrictions, we only enforce our zoning code and our comp plan.
Right, okay. So it would be up to that HOA, just like it is to all other HOAs, to enforce their covenants and restrictions? So that's not much different than any other, you know what I mean? Like, if a HOA says you have to have 1,000 square feet to build, but the county says the minimum square footage is 650, it is up to that HOA and covenant restriction to enforce those guidelines, not the county or the cities? So like, this wouldn't be any different, as far as if they added that to their covenants and restrictions, it would be on their HOA to enforce those things, just like all the rest of their covenants and restrictions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may clarify, that's a yes and a no answer to that question. HOAs, for example, I don't know, St. George Island or any other HOA, they have design criteria and things of that nature that we're not going to enforce. But if the property is zoned R6, and it's a 10-acre parcel, and it's buildable under our county code, then we're going to issue a building permit, because we're required to. So what she's saying, that the HOA, if I heard her correctly, can somehow trump that, then that would be an incorrect statement, because if it's R6, and it's a 10-acre parcel, and it's buildable, we're issuing a building permit.
I think what I'm, maybe I didn't like it, explain it correctly. I think what I meant was, just like, if their covenants and restrictions says that it has to be a single-family home, and no mobile homes allowed, but the county allows mobile homes in that area, they would give that building permit, but it would be, like, we have communities in Carabel, like Carabel Landings. Carabel Landings has 1,000-square-foot minimum HOA requirement, but the county's zoning there is only 650. So someone pulled a building permit for 650, and the HOA had to say, "No, you can't do that." But the city issued it, because they don't enforce those covenants and restrictions. So that's kind of where I'd got that thought process from.
I think what the attorney was trying to say is, we're legally bound if it's in the zoning code.
To give the permit.
We have to do it, but, and I appreciate the questions, and I appreciate wanting to understand, we're going to only take action on what we're looking at today.
Right.
We're not going to take action on speculation, we're going to take action on what's in front of us.
Okay.
And that's all we can do.
Right. I was just trying to think if there was some middle ground in here to achieve what the HOA was suggesting, like, they said, "We don't care about 30." Like, Ms. Molesby said, "I only live on 30 odd," she doesn't have 40. So she doesn't have a problem with the 30, but the zoning doesn't allow that. So that's why we were trying to figure out what middle ground there is, or what rules that the counties have, that we could find that middle ground, so that everyone's happy, and we can still do some type of division. But I don't think our restrictions allow that, I think it's 10 or 40, and that's it.
Yeah, so HOAs are kind of tricky, I would say that.
Right, I agree.
But, well, like, for instance, the HOI I live in, the houses had to be a certain size.
Right.
Now, the county can issue a permit for anything, if I want to go to court over it.
Yeah, right.
You know, because the county issues building permits, that's what they do.
Right.
As long as it's residential property. But none of that's going to get us clarification on what we're looking at today.
Right. My suggestion was just, if we approved it at R6 with the 10-acre tracks, then they could add to their covenants and restrictions to restrict what they allow inside their community to still maintain their, and like the comment that was, the original covenants and restrictions, and we want to go by our original guidelines, but the original covenants and restrictions does not say you have to have 40 acres to build.
Don't know about their HOA. I do know that we looked at one earlier that was 32.
Right.
Plus or minus, this one's 50. So at some point, something's been done with property.
Some point it's been changed, right, because there's several homes on less than 40.
But that's still not what we're looking at here today.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we're looking at just what we have today, and what's in front of us today, then does the HOA have that restriction now? If so, we would probably have to abide by it. But if it's not there, we have to look at what's in front of us now, and that is simply what the county provides. We've spent two months working toward this, and it's been approved by both meetings ahead, and here we are. I mean, Franklin County has very little land left.
Yes, ma'am.
And so this is why it was approved initially, in the first two meetings.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Just to clarify, it was approved for a public hearing?
Yes, it was approved for a public hearing. It's approved for, so what Ms. Baxter was saying is exactly, a reiteration, what the approval was in this whole process has been to get us to this point, approval to hold this public hearing. Anyone on line, Courtney?
Yes. Jean, if you want to unmute, you can speak now, state your name.
Hi, my name is Jean Strohmeier, and I have a property, the property that's adjoining the Schultz's and up the road from the other one, which is now a moot point. And I purchased my adjoining 50-acre from Elizabeth, and I'm adjoining her property. And this dilemma leaves me torn between, it's upsetting my love for them, and the reason we purchased in this community in the first place. It's my husband and I, we wanted unspoiled track of land that we could use to farm for the benefit of our family, our community, and we literally want to reap what we sow. The vast amount of protected land in agriculture zoning, which limited development to one for 40 acres, was huge, and that's what brought us here. Our community, the Pine Coast Plantation, is designed for agriculture. We all purchased our land for that purpose, with the knowledge and security that we would be safe from intrusions of overpopulation in our agriculture community. There are no properties, there's, I know, I guess there was a few 10-acre tracks around there, but they were meant originally for family members of owners that already existed. That's my That's my understanding. The owners that are asking for the rezoning don't intend to, at this point, live, farm, or use their land for the intended purpose of agriculture. However, the rest of us do have such plans. If these requests are approved, it will set a precedent for land speculators to buy any other large parcels in our community to develop subdivisions. I literally can build, if we go that way, I could build eleven houses on my properties. But we purchased our land to get away from subdivisions and the problems associated with it here in Tampa, Florida. The pollution, the noise, the, you know, just all of the woes of developments. This was not the intention of the original plans for this community, nor that we, the newer owners like myself, wanted to live and create our farms for the benefit of ourselves and family and the community to carry on for future generations. So I implore you guys and all of us to start, you know, working on a rezoning as we discussed, like, one per thirty. I don't mind that either. But as it is, you know, this person, and I, you know, I believe this person wants to buy with thirty and have a farm, but like one of the speakers previously said, is that they can split it up. And again, that's five homes right there during, you know, like, one of the speakers says, "I hunt my land." He's got forty acres. Well, I have fifty there and I intend to have a farm. You know, and, you know, again, I love the Schulzes and I just am sad that it's going like this. But I hope that, you know, with the HOA coming up with, you know, if somebody buys, yeah, they can have the zoning, the ten per, but the HOA can limit that to thirty or something. And I think there can be a way to make that happen. So I think we could maybe go ahead and schedule this at another time. That way, we can all maybe come up with something that everybody can live with. Thank you very much, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else want to? Yes, ma'am.
Just one last thought. We do love everybody out there. There's some good folks in the neighborhood, and we really want them to have a good neighbor. This young man is planning to buy this land tomorrow. It's thirty acres. He's planning to homestead and have a farm. That's his goal. We've waited two months. If they had issues with these ten acre parcels, perhaps that should have been in their HOA in the beginning. So it's not that way, and what is in front of us is what the county provides, and that's thirty acres has to be divided into ten acre parcels. Is that simple? Thank you so much.
Anyone else want to publicly comment? Ms. Kelly?
I have a copy of the amendments to the covenants of the Pine Coast Plantation dated 6/1/93, signed by the officers. Section, or Article Five, Section B, subdividing lots. No property owner shall sell a part of his property of less than forty acres unless to another association member, and the density of any parcel shall not exceed one dwelling per forty acres. I understand the county restrictions are different. I was not here when these were written, but I think it's only fair that they be respected. As the attorney said, it is possible to build on ten acres. That is not the covenants of the property that we purchased, and I ask the commissioners to respect those original covenants of the property that we purchased. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's try this a little different. Anyone that hasn't already spoke and would like to speak under public comments, now is your time.
Mr. Chairman, can we have commissioners comment now? Okay. I was there when the Higra Hammick Pine Coast Plantation was brought up. There was a couple of issues at the very beginning of it with some, two families. And one of the families is not here. The other family's name is on this petition. We've received a petition from the homeowners of Higra Hammick asking us to deny this as your commissioners see that before you. I don't know about you, but I've had numerous calls opposing this, none for it, all opposing. But what I was going to get back to, the reason why this was what it was, there was two families out there. One family had three children, one family had, you remember that, Mr. Schuler?
Not as well as you.
And you know I'm going with you. So anyway, and they wanted a way that their family could live out there around them because at the time, it was one per forty. So what we said was, one family had a family member that had cancer and had to be taken care of, very close to our home. And so we came up, the county came up with the idea that if you could show lineage to that property owner, whether it be a son, daughter, grandson, granddaughter, something like that, close proximity, not way down, we've got nieces, great nieces, nephews, or whatever. That's how that got there. Now, what it has done since I've left here, I don't know. But the original intent was the only time that you could do it to the R six zoning, one per ten, is if you showed a hardship and lineage to that original owner. And that was the only way that you could do it. And I'm going to go and stand on that, and I'll listen to the other commissioners, but I'm ready to make a motion myself.
Commissioners, anyone else?
I want commissioners to comment on it.
Any other commissioners have any comments?
They got any paperwork on this? Any paperwork they back saying this out of?
It's in the records, Mr. Noah. It's in the records.
It's in the record?
Yeah, in the records.
It need to be. If this in the record, it ought to be public record when acknowledged, when they axing, why it's not coming up?
I don't know. I just got here today.
Are you referring to the decisions to break down the other ones?
Yes.
Is that?
All of it. I mean, you know, if this part of what's supposed to be done, what I'm trying to say, and that's in the, that's in the record, that part of, if that was in the record.
Yeah.
See, it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be here.
When I'm dead, Mr. Noah.
I'm a old.
One family's dead, the person's dead, and the other person signed the petition opposing.
Opposing?
Opposing.
Against it, yes.
Yeah.
They gave me, I think they got the new guy, so they gave me the tricky chair.
See, that's what I was double checking.
It's hazing, I'm getting hazed. Mr. Chairman, my only thing is, is this, I mean, it's A two, right? Agriculture, which allows wind dwelling. If you break it down and go to R six, I think what the only, the main issue is it sets a precedent going forward legally. Like Attorney Schuler said, you know, the county cannot deny going forward once that's been passed. I believe that's the whole holdup here. I'm involved with HOAs, regrettably, but the county's got to go by the law of the land, so to speak. We can't, you know, an HOA can make whatever rules they want, but we've got to base our decisions off of how our hands are going to be tied. And basically, what I'm getting at is if you change that zoning from A two to an R six, we're only, we're obligated then to operate within the parameters of the law. So it just sets a precedent going forward, and that's where I'm looking at. If I'm wrong, anybody's got some comment on that, just for clarity? Am I correct? Attorney Schuler?
Commissioner Emerson, that is correct. That is correct. In fact, could Mr. Chairman, I would like to confirm what Commissioner Sanders was referring to about lineal descendants. There is a specific provision in your comprehensive plan that allows essentially for family sympathy situations where you've got, in this case hypothetically, a forty acre tract, but then you've got a lineal descendant and they want to also live on that tract. There is a provision in your comprehensive plan that would allow for that, and that's what I was hearing Commissioner Sanders say. So I just wanted to confirm that on the record.
I don't forget too much.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? So we're past public comments, we're past commissioner comments. I guess it's the pleasure of the board.
I'm going to make a motion to deny.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sanders.
I'll say.
We have a second by Commissioner Emerson. The motion is to deny this request. Any discussion before we vote, commissioners? All in favor? All opposed? It's a five-o vote, Ms. Kay. That concludes the public hearings for today. Mr. Malone, are we, we missed some stuff earlier? Are we going to come back to the plenar zoning report?
We will, but we could do that afterwards. If you don't mind, maybe we could go to Bobby Miller and then go to Ms. Pat O'Connell, and then we'll come back to planning and zoning. I think we took care of everybody else.
Okay. All right. Bobby Miller?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Welcome back, Cheryl. Ms. Sanders and Mr. Emerson, welcome to the party. I'll be very envious of how much you're going to enjoy the next four years. The reason for coming before you this morning is to try to see if there's a way or to strengthen the height restriction as it currently stands right now. Right now, we have a limit on height restriction. What the goal is, is try to strengthen what we have in place, not to change what we have in place, just strengthen it. And I've looked at this for the last five years. I mean, we've looked at cases that's gone to court, different counties, different states, different, all over the map. We originally came, I originally came to you in September six years ago with the idea of doing a resolution, but there are just absolutely too many loopholes in resolutions to, it's too risky. If we lose one resolution, we've completely lost everything on height restrictions, so I consider that too risky. What I'd like to ask you to do today is have a situation where it would require what I refer to as a supermajority vote, or at least a four-one, three plus one vote, however you want to term it. I will have to defer the language to Mr. Schuler to get that, to get that straightened out as to how it needs to be worded, because if you say supermajority and one board member's absent, then what is a supermajority? I think that's where the language came in. There were some court cases where it came in three plus one or something like that, but Mr. Schuler would best know how to do the language salad on that deal. Wordsmithing or whatever you would want to call it to do it. But I'd like to get your support this morning to move forward with a supermajority-type vote required by the commission before anybody could even consider any kind of change to our, exception to our height limit.
So, Mr. Miller, what you're asking us here is, I want to make sure I understand. What you're asking us to do this morning is to discuss potentially having this put on a future agenda, Attorney Schuler possibly draft language so we could hold, Attorney Schuler would have to hold a public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do an act of something like that? Okay. And potentially a public hearing.
Right.
But the idea behind all of this is to make it where going forward to amend our county comprehensive plan to change our height restrictions would take a, whatever, the attorney comes up with a three plus one or some type of supermajority format for that vote to be able to happen.
Correct.
Is what you're asking.
That's correct. And the city has just taken, the city of Apalachicola has just taken this on. They just passed, we're going to have, the city requires two public hearings for some reason, I don't know why, but they're preparing the language to go to a public hearing with the city right now. The city adopted it and they're, I'd spoken to Mr. Schuler earlier and maybe he may want to get together with Dan Hartman, who is a city attorney, who created the language for the city. I don't know exactly how he did it, and I just, that's out of my, that's above my pay scale.
Well, with it being, it would still be a change to our comprehensive plan, so we'd probably have to also have two public hearings, right?
Correct. You wouldn't, we would want more than a resolution. We would actually want an ordinance in effect or amendment to an ordinance or whatever Mr. Schuler deems the best. He's the guy that knows, not myself.
So move to do a public hearing?
What he's asking is, I think, commissioners for the ability for us to have Attorney Schuler draft something to bring back to us, and then at that point, we could move to have the public hearings, correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir. Mr. Noah, the, I need to research what paths may be available to the board, because you already have in place a very strong level of protection for the height restriction. Some of the issues that I have, if you adopt an ordinance, it only takes three out of five to adopt an ordinance, which say requires a four-fifths majority vote to change the height, but then three other board members could rescind that ordinance, so.
That's right.
It's complicated.
Yes.
It's unique. I spoke with Mr. Miller about it a couple of times, and I haven't really had any direction from the board to spend any time, you know, researching this and looking at it. So what I would recommend, if the board wants to consider this, is to direct me to look into the matter, report back to the board, give you some advice and some options and recommendations.
So do you amend your motion to reflect that, Commissioner Lockwood?
Yes. I dropped that one.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So, Mr. Lockwood's made a motion to direct you, Attorney Schuler, be able to do that.
Yes, sir.
So we do have a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a four-o vote. You have a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say in closing that this is probably just more red tape on this issue, but as you well know in government, the more red tape you have to climb through, the longer it takes you to get there. So it may give the citizens of the community time to be alerted that there's a problem with somebody wanting to break the height limit. I appreciate your time this morning. Thank you for all you do.
Ms. Pat O'Connell, local technology planning team? Trying to get us some internet service, right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and commissioners, thank you. I was appointed, I am Pat O'Connell. I was appointed by the previous commission to be the interim chair of this group, and I have a team member, Myrtis Nguyen is here. I'd like for her to stand up. She's on the team. Adrienne Elliott was here a little earlier, but she had to leave. So we really appreciate the team members that are helping so much. Let me just say, first of all, I've been involved in a lot of volunteer activities in this county. This is the most exciting one. I have never seen so many excited people. This is something that everybody recognizes is so valuable for our future, and it's just been a pleasure talking to all of these stakeholders. Okay, so what is this group? The purpose is for us to create an application for grant funding to spread broadband everywhere. And when we do that, we have to come up according to the state law with a strategic plan for deployment, and we want to include every household and every business. And we want those to meet the state minimums of twenty-five megabits per second downstream and three megabits per second upstream. So those are the minimum speeds that is considered high-speed internet. The feds in a couple of years are going to raise it to a hundred and twenty-five. So we are way down low right now, the state is, but we are not yet at those speeds. Okay, and so what this will do is give us the funds to try speeds. Okay, and so what this will do is give us the funds to try to get every household and every business to those minimum speeds. Let me just see if I can help you understand what that means. I'm not a techie. I had to learn all this in the last month, but it's like when you sit down at your computer or you're operating off your smart TV, and you decide that you want to see a Disney movie, a Marvel, you know, one of the superheroes. So, when you hit that button to go up to the Disney and draw that movie down, you don't need a lot of speed, because all you're doing is that one transaction, maybe paying, whatever, but that's pretty easy. When you bring that movie back, it's got special effects, it's got noise, it's got all of these kinds of things. If you're going to try to watch it on one of these low speeds, you're going to be so frustrated, because it's going to be buffering the whole time, and you're going to lose the whole effect of it. Adrienne is doing some work in Appalachia Cola checking out, and what she found is that one of the biggest issues they have with broadband is in the wastewater and drinking water operations, because if they don't have broadband, they can't do the data reports that are required, they can't operate remotely, they've got to send somebody out to the site to check the water quality. So, this is critical for our future. All right, so the action steps the state is requiring is for us to engage the stakeholders, and what we have been doing, we got at least 60 individuals, and I think I've added all of your names to this, but these are people that have taken on a job of reaching out to other people to ask them to get involved in our efforts, and it is amazing to me to hear all the work that people are doing. My first effort was to check with all the constitutional officers and all the county officers and department heads, and I would appreciate any time you get a report from any of those people, if you ask them if they have checked the speeds, because let me tell you, some of these offices have really fast speeds. The clerk has checked the court, the state attorney, and they are getting really good speeds. Other county offices are not, but what that tells me is that the county and the cities together are spending a lot of money on high speed. But you know what? It's helping those entities, but it's not reaching the residents. So, you've got huge buying power. If they are running these high speeds to those departments, they're passing right by those residents, so we've got to make sure that we are getting our stakeholders, the providers, engaged. And so here's what we're doing. First of all, here's the list of the technology planning team. Kevin Ward is a tech expert. He has Eagle Tree Technology, and he is a support for many of the county operations. I introduced you to Myrtis Nguyen, who's from the hospital board and has plenty of social contacts. Victoria Hart is from Lanark, and she and Pat Funderburke have been working overnight to get all these tests done in Lanark. It's been great to see that. I still don't have anybody from Alligator Point who has agreed to help, but I'm waiting. Hopefully, we will. Cheryl Fresh Middleton is in East Point. She's a minister. She has agreed to reach out to all the churches and ministries around the community, and she, of course, is part of the food bank operation, so we're reaching out to all of those entities. Sabrina Brown is from the city of Carabel, and she and Adrienne are, you know, maybe one twentieth of my age, so they are handling the social media. They've got Facebook posts, and they've sent them and shared them with other people so they can move ahead. The staff, as you know, is Michael and Courtney. Courtney has, is working to put a page on your website so that people can get engaged and learn about this project we're on. The community priorities are really dictated through common sense. It's education, because we know from the pandemic that if our schools are not equipped, if our families aren't equipped, they're not, there will not be the kind of quality learning and the use of technology that there can be. Healthcare, we've got both, all the Weems facilities and the Health Department are reaching out to all the medical community. We need to have every provider having high-speed access, because it is the way of the future for healthcare. And finally, economic development, and Commissioner Lockley has been saying, you know, I want to, how many jobs you're going to create? Well, I am here to tell you that this program with broadband can create all kinds of jobs. Think about this implementation program going on the countrywide. We could, in Franklin County, we could be training technicians so that if I, as a senior citizen, need some help, I can get somebody locally. I don't have to wait for Best Buy to come down from Tallahassee to help me. We can, people, you know, somebody has to climb the tower to put up the cell tower up there. We need people that can operate these systems, and the school district is already looking into workforce training with this emphasis, because the internet is our way of the future, and we can have lots of trained people who can serve this multi-regional area, because we know these are high-paying jobs, they're clean jobs, and you can sit in your house here and help somebody who is around the world. So, yes, sir, this program will help us if we all work together to bring jobs and to create jobs for the people who live here. The second action, third act, what is that, fourth we have to do is harness the data. Now, in your packet, you should have a couple of documents there that you might want to take a look at. The, take the speed test, this is what we're asking everybody to do. I need you to go home and take this speed test on your computer at home. If your speed is not 25 and 3, you are not getting high speed. I can tell you that we have consolidated at our house, we pay for the highest speed they have, $129. I don't get that. My house doesn't have that. So, something is going on. If you look at this map that you are populating when you create this, take this speed test, you will see that this county is paying a lot of money for high speed that it is not getting. So, in a few minutes, Michael's going to ask you to create a workshop setting for us where we can ask the providers to explain what the problems are. I mean, we know why, and, you know, everybody understands it's not profitable for them, so the question is, what will it take? That's the question we've got to ask providers. What will it take for our citizens to get the high speeds that the law contemplates you should have, that they should be providing? So, there, the speed test is easy to do. It only takes a minute. I know Commissioner Jones has done it. I don't know if the rest of you have or not, but I'd like for you to do it. We, the state says we have to have 10% of our households take this test in order for us to have a valid map. Well, when we started this about three weeks ago, we only had maybe 120. Now, we're up to about 600, but we still need to get to 865. So, every person takes the test, and the way you do it is do it on your home Wi-Fi or your work Wi-Fi. We don't want you to measure your cell speed, because cells are great, but you can't read a book on a cell phone, you can't fill out a government document on a cell phone, you can't, you know, you can't have the life that you can have if you have a tablet or something that allows more than just finger keys. So, this next one is another wonderful program. The feds have made the most generous affordability program they've ever had. This program allows you to get a discounted high-speed service at your home, and also to get a new tablet or laptop at a discounted rate, and the generosity of it is that the eligibility categories are just boundless. I mean, if you have a family of four, you can make up to $55,000 a year and still qualify. If you're in, one person in the household has SSI or Medicaid or WIP or in the free and reduced lunch program, the household qualifies for these discounts, and it makes it, in some cases, it can even be free. Now, let me just say, we, the library, Whitney and her staff have been great, because they've been calling our multiple providers of internet to see how many are participating. I mean, they're making money off our residents here. Are they giving back to the county by offering to support this program that the feds pay for? And so far, we've only found one. I mean, we've got maybe eight or 10 providers here. We've got one that's offering devices and one that's offering discounts. I'm telling you guys, you've got the power with your dollars going into this program right now, today, so that's something else that needs to be asked. And there is a final document, I think, in there, I hope, which was a Facebook social media post, and I wanted to make sure and give Sabrina Brown credit for that. The next step that the state expects us to do is to consider digital inclusion. We're not waiting. We're not waiting until we get all these other things done. That's why we're sending out this affordability document to everybody in the county. We've asked all the agencies to share it, all the churches to share it, the schools, because there are only, the last I looked, about 200 families that are receiving a benefit. You and I know there are more than 200 families that could qualify for this. We just need the providers to deliver. And then we have to create an assessment of all of our infrastructure and our assets, because we have to make sure that we have high speed in our anchor institutions. The two firehouses out on St. George Island, their speeds are like 4 and 1/2. In other words, the most important facilities down there, and they are, they don't have high speed. The hospitals, the schools, the community meeting places are all need high speed, and we're going to make sure and map that. And then engage local internet service providers. They are the guys. They are the people that are going to make this happen. This particular funding program that the state has that's open right now, the money goes to the providers. You have to agree that what their plan is, is correct, but they get the money, not you. This money is to pay them to do what they have not done in these rural counties. This program right here that we're talking about is $400 million for the state, and that, 40% of that is set aside just for the rural counties. Over the next few years, the federal government expects to put $2 billion into Florida for these programs. So, this is our best chance we'll ever have, and if we don't get this grant, we'll go for a different one. There's lots of things that need to happen, but the providers have to be our partners. They have to care as much about Franklin as we do. And finally, evaluate the solutions. The providers can get money from the state if they can show that they're going to meet an unmet need, and we're going to have to help them make sure they live up to that. Our final product will be a grant application. It might be to the state, it might be to the feds, it might be somewhere else, who knows, but we're in it for the long haul. This team is going to be here until we get a product out there that will bring money into this county for this purpose. And so, it's, I've told everybody, just plan on a year of having these conversations, but right now, we're taking the speed test to get our average speeds, and we're telling people about the affordability program, so that if they happen to choose the right provider, they might be qualified to get some funds. If you have any questions? That's it. Thank you. Michael, you've got something for us?
A couple items, but first, Commissioners, I want to thank you for allowing me to engage Pat in this matter, because finally, this whole broadband thing makes sense.
Yes.
Before Pat got involved, it did not. I'll be very honest with you, and I just, myself, Courtney, we didn't have the time to invest in the way Pat has done and presented it here today, so we get a clear and better understanding of our mission, what we need to do to get access to broadband here in the county. And something, I saw somewhere, Pat, I don't know if it came from you, Commissioners, be warned, there's a difference between access and affordability.
Yes.
Very big difference, and don't be tricked into thinking that, you know, because it's accessible, that they're going to make sure that it's affordable for everybody. That's two separate battles we have to fight, you know, but we'll get there.
Yeah, and we're going at them both at the same time, because although the state says accessibility is what it's about, accessibility doesn't mean anything if you can't afford it.
That's right.
So, you can, you know, it's like having food next door. If you can't get to it, it's not going to help you.
Well, it needs to not only be accessible and affordable, it needs to be reliable.
Yeah.
That's why we're talking about broadband specifically. But yeah, no, it's a very important issue, and I think our biggest leverage, and it'll all come in, I'm sure, as we work through this process, our biggest leverage as a county is, we as a political subdivision have the ability to pursue these grants and to make agreements, but the agreement's not going to be one-sided. You get the money, so now you're going to build it out. No, you're going to get the money, you're going to build it out, it's going to be accessible, it's going to be affordable, and it's going to be reliable. That's the leverage we have, and that's the leverage we must maintain.
If I may, I do have, if you go to my report to the very back, page 21 of your printed packet, to the very top, the heading is actually in the page before, a few minutes ago, you heard Ms. Pat O'Connell's report. Last week, Pat, Courtney, and myself, we met with Appalachian Regional Planning Council representatives to discuss any assistance they can offer to help with our broadband initiative efforts as they are assisting other counties in the region. Staff would like board approval to work with ARPC before we kind of dispatch them or encourage them to go ahead and get some proposal quotes for some of the, some of the ways that they can help us. There are different ways, and, you know, I won't get into the specifics right now, but it will be different quotes that will come before this board for your approval, but I don't want to send them on their way to do stuff if this board is like, ah, I'm not sure we want to deal with ARPC. I kind of need a nod from this board to go ahead and engage them. Again, we will not, we will not agree to anything until this board looks at a proposal, understands the proposal, and signs off on it.
I may.
I have a motion back to Commissioner Sanders.
I'll second.
Second, Dr. Commissioner Ward, to allow this engagement with the Regional Planning Council, correct, and see where it goes from there. Any discussion before we vote, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's your names.
One more item, Commissioners, the following one, item eight. Pat and Courtney, they met with a few companies that provide internet service in the county, as you just stated. At some point, these firms may apply for broadband funding and probably will ask for letter of support from the county, because they can. They can apply around the county. They can go straight and apply for certain grants, Commissioners, without coming through the county, but they will ask for letter of support, because we've been told that county letter supports, guess what, Commissioners, it helps with their scoring and funding for the projects. So, both Pat and I think that it would be proper for these companies to meet with you in a workshop setting to explain their plan to make broadband accessible for your residents. Mr. O'Connell may have additional comments and can suggest a possible date for the workshop. There's no pending grant right now that will meet-
There is a pending grant window, but it closes in early December.
So.
You know, the state opened this program a year ago, and the county is only now really getting going, but we're not the only ones. So, I don't think we ought to be bound by this particular application, but I would recommend that when you hold a workshop- that when you hold a workshop, you know, like, didn't you already pick a date for a workshop? It's so much easier if everybody's already here.
Well, I did not, 'cause we had the other one, we already locked in December sixth for, I don't think anybody's gonna wanna meet in the week of Christmas, December twentieth, so I'm thinking sometime in January. So I was gonna find out, you can find out the schedules, what's good for them, let me know, and then I will get with the board and we schedule it.
So you're talking about the schedule for the providers?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Get the providers, if you got, if the board, before she does that, once again, I wanna make sure you guys are good with that scheduling, a workshop in January sometime, to hear from them, and she's right, you guys can question, well, why don't we have better coverage? Now, why don't we have better speeds for the money that we're paying?
'Cause I know, I'm trying to go after Star Lake.
Yeah, that's.
It's right across the river from me, but it's not over here in Franklin County yet.
With that initial investment, though.
Can I, quick?
Yes.
On that BP thing, they always come out, putting people, you gotta put people to work. This don't qualify for us to get no money, but do that?
From BP? I don't know, sir.
Just tell me, maybe through Triumph?
Yeah.
Yeah, Triumph.
Avenue to explore.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they always holler about, it gotta put people to work. From the Pat, that's named a whole lot of work, that thing can put people to work through. We can tell them, they can't send them a yes or no now.
Yeah, that's true. That is true.
It's a great idea.
And then?
Well, I make a motion, we try, ask them.
Okay. You're presenting to Triumph, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They always, they turn us down on everything, yeah.
Not completely. We've got some stuff we're gonna talk about later with that.
Hey, Commissioners, I would ask you to hold off on that motion, 'cause we're gonna discuss a conversation we had with Triumph yesterday, and then maybe you can incorporate it then, if you'd like. Okay?
That'd be good.
If you don't mind, if you don't mind. But yeah, okay, so Pat, so if you get, oh, there she is, if you get with the companies, see what's good related to the board, and we'll set a date sometime early, early next year. That works?
Mr. Chairman, I just want, thank you, Ms. O'Connell, for your diligence and hard work in this. I know last week you missed the last meeting, 'cause you were on a conference call about this, so thank you. Thank you to Mr. Ward, Ms. Winn, Ms. Hart, Ms. Frish Middleton, and Commissioners Elliott and Brown for taking this task on. We really appreciate your time, 'cause it's all volunteer. You are basically voluntold, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, and thank you. We also have to thank the constitutional officers and the staff, 'cause they're doing such a great job. And everybody made reports to me, except Rick Watson, our tax collector, 'cause his computers were down.
I wanna thank, I wanna thank everybody involved. Y'all keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Not yet, not till we set the date. Yeah, 'cause we have a lot of coordination to do, so, yeah. Okay.
All right, so now we're going back to the planning, zoning.
Are we ready for that? You guys wanna take another quick break, 'cause you've been sitting for a while here?
Yeah, we can.
And then we come back with planning and zoning?
Yeah, let's take at least five minutes.
Yeah, I think we could go through planning and zoning, then Karen's report, and then mine, is we're, we didn't have my items already, to be honest.
Yeah, we've already.
All right, we'll recess till twelve oh five.
Okay. President candidate, Board of County Commissioners now back in session. Ms. Courtney Bankston, please proceed with our Planners on Adjustment Board Report.
All right, so first I have a variance request for 537 Gulf Shore Drive. The consideration for a variance to construct an equipment building 25 feet into the 50-foot wetland setback and described at 537 Gulf Shore Drive, Dog Island. This was submitted by Lisa Echols, agent for Duke Energy, who is the applicant. The applicant had made a lot of talks with the flood plan administrator, with Mark, to be able to have an equipment building for their vehicles that are on Dog Island instead of having to have something transferred back and forth during a storm. They already have a building there, but they just need a place to keep the equipment, the vehicles from getting messed up by the saltwater. So they are only allowed at 1,200 square feet according to the FEMA regulations, and they met that, and the board did recommend approval for those.
Second.
Motion to approve. Dr. Commissioner Lockley, second, Dr. Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, second item I have is another variance for 1,420 Camilla Court. Consideration of a request for a variance to demolish and reconstruct new stairs and landings 5.8 feet into the 25-foot front setback to meet the current Florida Building Code requirement. And this is on St. George Island. The request was submitted by Tyler Marsh, agent for William and Jackie Porter, applicant. The current stairs and landing encroach 5.2 feet into the front 25-foot setback. So they're just asking for a few little point feet to meet the state requirements for the landing.
Okay, so that's the only substantial change, a six inches further?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And the board did recommend approval.
All right, closing the board.
So moved to approve.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, next item is the critical shoreline applications. The first one we have is for 328 Patton Street. It's consideration of a request to construct a 6-by-6 platform with a 5-by-37 access pier standing from the, extending from the shoreline to a 10-by-32 terminal platform and a 12-by-25 covered boat slip with a lift and a 12-by-25 uncovered boat slip. And this is on St. George Island, submitted by Erin, agent for Mark Inglay's applicant. And he did get a Florida DEP exemption. I'm not sure if he's going to need federal permit, but state permit. He did get an exemption for that. There was a discussion during the meeting about the regulations, the requirements for setbacks to the repairing right lines. And I did confirm that with Mark that it is 25 feet. So they, the board did want to do a contingency upon verification and setback requirements from the repairing rights with possible modification. So I did get a new copy of his site plan, and it does show he's made the deck smaller to meet those 25 feet on both sides, and that's a state requirement, is a 25 feet.
But they're, they're meeting the repaired and right lines, is what you're saying?
Not with the application that's on here, but the application that he just submitted, or the site plan he submitted this morning.
Okay, so how do we move forward? Because we can only take action on what's in front of us.
Yeah, because the motion was just contingent upon that. I don't know how you want to.
Commissioner, the recommendation that I've made to the advisory board last night was to approve the application contingent upon them submitting a revised drawing that, they were like 22 feet on one side and slightly approaching on the other. So they just shrank the width of the, I guess, the dock so that they now meet the 25-foot ripperian right setbacks. So if this board's going to approve it, it would be to approve based on the amended drawing showing compliance with the 25-foot ripperian setback lines.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify for the record.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They got the room. They got plenty of room.
Yes, the revised drawing that Ms. Courtney just described to us shows that they meet the 25-foot ripperian setback lines. That, that was the only question about the application last night.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I, I make a motion to do like the attorney's here. As long as they send us a picture, make sure they send us a picture.
That's sufficient, y'all?
Yes.
And that's okay with you?
Yes, because I issue the dock permits anyway, so when I issue the permit, it'll be off of the site plan that's revised with the meeting those setbacks.
If that's okay?
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley and a second by Commissioner Sanders, contingent on them submitting a revised drawing showing that they are making sure that they're not taking anybody else's ripperian rights away. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Courtney, I want to ask you before we go on. Do we need to address item C? We skipped over it.
Yeah, it was tabled at the meeting. It doesn't show on there. Yeah, it was tabled.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure, because one of the things I gave for public comment was, was about that. Actually, one of them was about the dock, but I didn't notice. A little late for that. Sorry. Go ahead, please proceed.
Okay. The next one is for 399 Highway 98. It's consideration for a request to construct a commercial dock that will consist of a 49-by-4 access walkway, a 60-by-6 terminus with three finger piers, creating five boat slips at the property described as 399 Highway 98 East Point. This was submitted by Valick Environmental. Dan is here. If y'all have any questions for him, an agent for Ms. Dale, applicant. And the decision will be contingent upon state and federal permits. There was a lot of discussion during this one as well with it being a commercial dock. But any questions that the board did have, Dan did answer those questions sufficiently.
Mr. Dan, come on up here. Because I'm sure we're going to have some questions.
Yeah.
Good morning, one and all.
Good morning, sir. Good to see you today. I support docks, always do, but the only issue I have with this dock is the timeline that's being asked. We've been waiting 40 years to get a dredge screw in the East Point Channel. They are there working, and I, I mean, I think maybe this needs to be tabled till after that's over with, because we're, we're not going to have, I don't think we should permit and put people in the way of when they start to work. This is a $3 million project. We want to get it accomplished.
We, yeah, we, we're still working on our state and federal permit. I can tell you, it's not going to probably be about four or five more months before we get that, but all we're doing is asking for the same thing that's already occurred out there, which has been built by a couple other dock builders. And that's all we're looking for, except that this one's going to be setback 75 feet, nowhere near the channel, but, you know, it's up to you what you, you know, where you want to go.
No, that's an issue. I think the other issues, I just, I just, the other ones, yes, there have been docks amended and already worked on, but they're completed. The dredge crew, we've been waiting a long time to get them here, and now that we're here, we don't want to have any conversation with them about us paying an extra fee or doing something different because we've now permitted work to go on in that same channel.
Understand. You want to give me a date certain on that?
Well, why don't we try to do this? Why don't we try to table it until you guys have the additional permits for seeking?
Okay.
And then we can do it. I think that'd be the best for all of us.
Not a problem.
Motion to table.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Sanders to table. We have a second by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. So we'll table it, and we'll hear back from you, sir.
Thank you.
Be ready to proceed, yes, sir.
All right, he's got one more up here. For the same address. This is a kind of a two thing project. They're also building, this is for a commercial site plan, a 30-by-40 commercial building located across the street, not located on the water side. I'll pull it up for you. There it is. They meet setback requirements, they meet parking requirements with the building just being admin office and bait and tackle for the boats that'll be across the street. The board didn't have many questions on it, and they did recommend approval on it.
This is the one here, if we could get started on this one, I could actually encourage them to think about doing the work on that side, for now.
The, Ms. Courtney, you said they did have enough parking?
Yes.
As compared to just for this building or for the marine on the south side that they're potentially going to build?
Both, both. That's what we wanted, is have our parking on the other side, the north side of the street, instead of along, along the waterside. We have to have five, five parking spaces according to the ordinance. So the idea is put those on the other side and plus what we need for the building itself.
Okay.
But we, this one, we could do pretty fast. All we need is what's referred as a 10-2 permit with a core engineer, I'm sorry, with the Water Management District, so I could persuade them to look at building that and then waiting on the other side there. If that's good with y'all, then we could go that route.
But what, so what's being asked for today, just to be able to go to the next phase?
I guess you'd see commercial site plan.
Yeah, this is commercial site plan. They won't be able to pull any permits until they have, like, their stormwater and all that stuff.
Right.
Anyway, I know the board did bring up, like, traffic safety and pedestrian safety.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this, this could even be standalone. I mean, you know, if it, this gets approved, then it could be standalone, for instance, if the area on the other side does not get approved. I mean, we still got state and feds, but this is an area here that could be standalone as a C2 principal use.
Right, right.
And, and one thing I did talk to Mark about, he said that's something that they will be able to work with DOT about if they need to put a pedestrian, you know, crossing and all that stuff there with, like, lighting and stuff, but that's, you know, for him to work on with DOT, that wouldn't be for us or anything.
There probably needs to be one there anyway. I've talked to him a couple times. Because the adjacent business to this property has a parking across the street, too.
Right.
You know, so there probably does. There don't need to be two or three, but there probably does need to be one.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I know they would never go for two or three. So far, they haven't went for the one, but hey, let's, you know, let's see whatever needs to be, so we need to make sure people are safe, I guess, is the point I'm trying to make.
Agreed.
You know what I mean? Yes, I mean, it's, if it, if it, I'm just trying to make sure where we're at, because here it says this is not a permit application.
Correct.
Right.
This is just site plan review.
Right, so with approval today, what would be the next step?
The next step would, for him to basically apply for his permit, but he wouldn't be able to do that with the building department until he had his stormwater regulations.
Yeah, we, we're going to get our 10-2 permit first from the Water Management District for the stormwater plan, then we'll bring that back as a final, and then we get a building permit after the final.
So the stormwater plan is definitely not included in this, then is?
Right, we just want to make sure you're happy with it first.
That's why I was, I was like, I only see half of this stuff.
Yeah, it's only contingent upon that stormwater.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Garret, you cannot proceed further to do these things unless we approve this today.
Correct, correct.
But, okay, just for clarification, thank you. With that, I'm going to, I'm going to motion to approve this contingent upon stormwater and possible traffic safety and pedestrian safety evaluation, as that's what the BOA and PZ board recommended as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward with contingencies. I can't, sorry, I can't say all that back. I'll say it wrong. So do we have a second?
I second it.
All right, and we have a second by Commissioner Lockley. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And that is all I have, unless you guys have anything for me.
That's it? And I'm telling you what, we're moving at the speed of light now. Thank you, Ms. Courtney.
No problem.
Just make sure we've covered everything up to now. Ms. Erin Griffith, Fiscal Manager, Grants Coordinator, you are on.
Okay, Erin. Kind of have a long report today. Okay, the first item, the FEMA-funded repairs of Alligator Drive are now complete. The flashing lights have been removed and access has been restored. The project will require as-built certification and surveys and closeout of existing permits with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The engineers are recommending approval of change order number six, which will extend the final completion date to January 31, 2023, to allow time for the project closeout process. Board action to approve the attached no-cost final time extension change order, which will extend the final completion date to January 31, 2023, to allow for the closeout of permits.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley to approve this time extension. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, the next item, the FEMA-funded repairs of Island View Park are also nearly complete. There continues to be some ongoing delays with materials, and this extension with a final completion date of January 31, 2023, will allow sufficient time for completion and formal project closeout. I do want to bring your attention to, with Island View Park, the most significant delay was that we only had one bidder on the project, and FEMA, it was really difficult, and it took months to get an answer out of them, for us to determine that we were finally able to award the bid to the winning contractor. So the notice of award was actually issued at the May 17 board meeting. The notice to proceed, which was the contract start date, was June 13, 2022. And this latest extension, we don't anticipate it taking that long. We actually anticipate the park being open within the next 30 days, but we just wanted to make sure that there was sufficient time should anything else come up. So board action to approve the attached no-cost time extension change order, which will extend the substantial completion date to January 31, 2023, to allow for project closeout.
Is this the first time that they've asked for an extension on it?
This is actually the second time, Commissioner.
I thought so. They need to go ahead and let's get this thing moving and done.
Yep.
Because we're tired of not looking at it, or we're tired of looking at it like it is. This should have been way done a long time ago. I can assure you on my watch, it's going to get done. I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve the extension, but don't give them no, no time past January 31st.
Okay, okay. I will communicate that with them.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amerson and Commissioner Ward. Any discussion?
The, the holdback is material and stuff.
Yeah, the vinyl sheet pile material was a delay, and we actually saw that on Alligator Drive as well.
Now experienced, so.
Yeah, that's what the holdup is now, but now, like Ms. Griffith said, for about three or four months, we only had one person bid on the project, and FEMA was wanting us to rebid the project because they want at least three bidders. And we finally, they finally said, yes, I can proceed what you have, y'all put it out there, y'all noticed it, these zones responded, so you can award. But we, that, that was about three or four months before we ever got to the other part.
Yeah, and actually Jennifer Daniels actually ran into one of the higher-ups down at one of the emergency management conferences, and that's when we finally got a response out of them.
Yep.
It was very beneficial for them to go to those meetings.
Yes. Okay, so any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item, the brick grant application submission for Weems Windows. Applications were due yesterday for the brick grant program of the three projects which were initially discussed for the program, which was security windows at the Franklin County Jail, the courthouse roof replacement, and Weems window replacement. The window replacement for Weems Hospital was the only project which passed the initial vetting process for the grant program. If the grant is awarded, the county will be responsible for a 10% match, approximately $103,958, for the total estimated project construction costs, $1,039,581. If funded, the 10% match requirement will be paid from the available balance in the health care trust fund. Board action to grant retroactive approval for the, for the chairman to sign and submit the brick grant application, which was due yesterday.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Okay, Commissioners, next item, at the October 18 meeting, Franklin County received a $54,602 SIGP grant agreement from the Florida Department of Transportation for the design permitting, preparation of construction plans and specifications to widen and resurface the .73 miles of patent drive from SR30, which is US 98, to SR300 Island Drive. This project will widen the road from the existing 10-foot lanes to two standard 12-foot wide travel lanes. Roadway swales and ditches will also be regraded to improve drainage. As Franklin County follows the Consultants' Competitive Negotiation Act in selecting engineering firms for design improvements, the ongoing county engineering contract with Dewberry and Florida Statute 287.055 allows for the county to negotiate with the county contracted engineers for the project. Board action to authorize staff to negotiate with county engineers Dewberry for the design of this project.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, the next portion of my report is really just the end of the year fiscal keeping that we're trying to mop up some of the last minute items. So I'm just going to start and probably go through these pretty quickly. Attached are eight resolutions for the adoption of unanticipated revenues as part of the end of the fiscal year bookkeeping. These funds were not included in your original adopted 2122 budget because at the time of budget adoption, they were unanticipated. Florida Statute 129 allows a county 60 days after the end of the fiscal year to incorporate unanticipated revenue into the prior year's budget. This is the last commission meeting that any of these resolutions can be approved. The first resolution is for $1,153,058 in federal and state grant funds received from the Florida Division of Emergency Management relative to the FEMA Island View Park repairs project. The second resolution is for $116,591 in federal grant funds received from the U.S. Treasury relative to the American Recovery Plan Program. The third resolution is for $15,536 in federal and state grant funds received from the Florida Division of Emergency Management for the FEMA repairs of C30 Gulf Avenue. The fourth resolution is for $90,595 in state grant funds received from the Florida Department of Transportation for the SCOP Woolnet Creek Bridge Project. The fifth resolution is for $739,997 in state grant funds received from the Florida Department of Transportation for the SCOP Timber Island Road Project. The sixth resolution is for $6 million in federal restore funding consortium grant funds received from the United States Treasury for the dredging of the East Point Two Mile Channels. The seventh resolution is for $100,000 in state grant funds received from the Florida Division of Management Services for the E911 Region One GIS Data Support Project. The eighth resolution is for $3,530 in additional state grant funds received from the Florida Department of Agriculture for the mosquito control program. The ninth resolution is for $20,000 in additional permitting revenues used for the professional services for the Franklin County Building Department. Board action to adopt the nine attached budget resolutions. I do apologize, I did say eight earlier.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion, Commissioners?
Are you, you sure you got all them now? Don't want to miss nothing.
All in favor? All opposed? That is unanimous.
Okay, and the next item is your line item budget amendments. I have five line item budget amendments for approval by the board. Budget amendments simply move budgeted amounts between the line items during the fiscal year. The first one, the budget amendment below, is needed to adjust the line items to cover additional expenses for part-time professional assistants during staffing shortages in the planning and zoning department. You all likely, likely remember that, that was when Ms. Courtney was out, you know, having her baby. The second one, the budget amendment below, is needed to adjust line items to move additional expenses within three departments with shared expenditures, administrative services, fiscal management, and planning departments, and the numbers in departments are below for your review. Number three, the budget amendment below is needed to fund unanticipated repairs of the compactor at the landfill, removing from capital outlay into the repair and maintenance line item. Item number four, the budget amendment below is needed to move budgeted funds from the solid waste department to Parks and Recreation to cover shared operational expenses. Item number four, the budget amendment below is needed to move budgeted funds from the solid waste department to Parks and Recreation to, oh, sorry, went back to that one. And number five, the budget amendment below is needed to move budgeted funds between line items in the E911 fund for the GIS data support grant. And board action to approve the five line item budget amendments summarized above.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, and I just want to mention one item, because I know it was brought up at the beginning of the meeting, and we are working with a vendor to actually add the ADA access button to the eastern bank of doors here on your Annex location, so that, that issue will be resolved hopefully by the end of the year.
Did they ever get them at the airport?
Sir? Yeah, I got to check with Mr. Collins where we are with the parking and the building, and we just can't have. and we just can't have any meetings on that third floor anymore. It's just, there's no way we can make that ADA without putting a small elevator of some sort and I'm not sure we want to spend that money.
Yeah.
And we did repair the access ramp as well at the St. Rhode Island Fishing Pier.
Yes.
So that, that's another ADA improvement that we've just accomplished.
Yes.
I need to ask a question. I don't understand, at the last meeting, y'all, you all brought up about doing another grant project for Highway 67 from the Crooked River Bridge to Road 166.
Mm-hmm.
What grant was this under?
I believe both of those are SCOP grants.
Okay.
Yep.
Because are y'all aware that there's six more miles of road above that two mile?
Let's see, there's actually three active projects on CR 67 right now, so let me.
That really concerned me because if we're having to wait, it's gonna be five years before the whole road's gonna be paved.
Let's see here, Commissioner.
Because it's like a 16-mile-long road coming from Carabao to the Liberty County line.
Let me see if I can pull that up real quick and I can actually tell you where.
I mean, I hate to ask you, but that concerns me.
Yeah, if Michael wants to chime in, I can go ahead and get that nailed down. If you want to start on your subjects, Michael, and then I'll figure out which ones we have, from where to where.
Do you look it up? Just interrupt me when you, when you.
Oh, here we go, okay. Okay, well, here we go, Scrap CR 67 Phase 2 is Crooked River. Yep, Scrap, yep. So that one is from Crooked Creek Bridge to SFR 166. And then the other one, let's see, number three. Okay. Phase 3 was SFR 166 to SFR 172.
Okay. If they don't get it to the county line, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
And, and so you, you're doing it a Phase 2 within this year?
Yep, there's Phase 2 and Phase 3 going on right now. I can actually send you the, the routes of both.
Is there any way that we can go ahead and finish that route?
We can definitely apply.
Look at that, if y'all don't mind, look at it and bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, Mark will look it up.
And, and see what we can do because we need to go ahead and finish that road. We don't need to be piecemealing.
Yeah.
Okay? Because everywhere there's a piecemeal, there's a bump.
Okay.
True. Commissioner Lockley, I will get with Mr. Collins on that, kind of see where they are with the design and the progress of the ADA. Basically, again, from the parking lot to get in the building and once you get in the building to get into that, that bottom floor, like, you know how they have like that well area? So I'll, I'll find out where we are with the progress of that, okay? Think you said it back, they checked the bathrooms and something else already and they're pretty much good. It's just those two parts and I'll let you know, sir.
Yeah, do that, please, that's embarrassing when them kids come in and can't get in.
Yeah.
That hurts my feelings.
Yeah.
Real quick, is, is this a perfect time to circle back to that trial discussion?
We're first to do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is. No, you can.
Sure. Ready? All right, 19, item one, as the emergency management team prepared for Tropical Storm Nicole, Ms. Bernal, your director recommended that the chairman sign a state of emergency proclamation in case there was any local damage from Tropical Storm Nicole. Thank God there wasn't. Passport action has authorized the chairman to sign LSE declarations based on the director's recommendation. This signature is then ratified as your next county commission regular meeting, which is today. So I just need the board to ratify the chairman's signature.
So move.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, item three is the committee of events that I know is, they're vacant right now and we need some action on. There might be more that comes up. And the first one, Dr. Sandra Broke from AFC, she requested a commissioner to serve and the AFC Community Advisory Board. I, I don't know how often they meet commissioners, I don't have much information on that.
So far, I think it's once a month.
Just once a month?
Yes.
Okay, so, any volunteers to serve in the AFC board? Going once?
Well.
Twice?
I don't know who has what time, but if he would possibly consider doing it, I'd like to see if Commissioner Amerson would work on that board. Since he is, since he is in seafood and has been his entire life.
I make a motion.
For Commissioner.
Amerson to be on the ADSI, is that what it is?
So have a motion, second a motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley.
Gotta be quick, Commissioner Amerson.
Commissioner Ward, how, how do you say?
You don't have to do it if you're old.
That term you use, we got.
Mr. Chairman, he got ball and told.
Ball and told, yes.
Trust me, I was a normal man.
There we go.
All right, so we do have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay. The next, the next one is transportation disadvantage. The ex-commission for District 2, does anybody like to, they want, they meet once a quarter, I believe.
Yes, they do.
And they usually meet here, in this room.
Well, we might, Mr. Chairman, we might as well just keep with, you know, keep with term here and maybe.
I don't know, I served on there about 12, 14 years.
So you're knowledgeable about it, then, you know it's valid.
Y'all gonna make me choke here.
Who do we have for disadvantaged transportation now? Because back then it was Mr. Crane.
It's Gulf.
Gulf.
Gulf Franklin.
Oh, you forgot Gulf Franklin.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, we still do.
But they, they park their vehicles here, it's, it's a pretty good, they're pretty.
Yeah, we do have parking their vehicles here now, not over in Gulf County.
Yes.
Now, I will try to remember Michael Morone, where, they're pretty good, great.
Yeah.
For now, until you find someone.
Sir, oh my goodness.
She hasn't consented to it yet.
I'll be, I'll do that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Sanders to the transportation disadvantage board.
So motion, motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? I think we about talked this one out.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That is unanimous.
Usually I just have action items and informational items, we start having ball and told. That's how it says, ball and told, yeah, that item, okay.
Yeah.
C is, this is, I don't need any commissioner to sit on this one, I just, usually, we rotate the municipal seat
That's right.
on Appalachia Regional Boarding Council, it's, it's, it's Carabao's turn. I just need the board to, to allow me to reach, request.
I make a motion to request you to, to reach out to the city of Carabao and let them appoint somebody.
Yes.
For ALPC.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Mr. Morone, before we proceed, I still think we do, I don't know that we do. Aren't we supposed to have somebody on the consortium board?
I'll find out.
We need to know if, if they're willing for an appointment for this county for consortium. We definitely want to be in that conversation, sir.
Absolutely.
I'll find out, sir. Bring it back in the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I sure will.
All right, thank you.
All right, next page, page 20 to the top, at your last meeting, the board directed Solomon, the TDC administrator, to seek a recommendation from the TDC to increase his contract amount to $174,000 for the 2223 fiscal year. The TDC, at their November 9th regular meeting, reconfirmed their recommendation for the $174,000. Based on your last motion, the next step, which I'm asking permission for, would be to proceed with negotiating a contract with Mr. Solomon for this amount.
Question. Question. So the TDC has already approved that $174,000 for this year's budget?
Yes.
What was last year's budget?
Okay, we can't, we don't have that in front of us.
That sounds right.
Yeah, 112?
Yep, that does sound correct.
Okay, now, this does not go directly to Mr. Solomon.
No, it doesn't.
No, it's, it's not a salary, no, it's, it's.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am, you're right.
But that's not his salary.
That's not his salary, no.
That's what I want people to know, it's not his salary.
Yeah, it's, it's administrative cost for the entire, I guess, the chamber.
The administration of that, yeah, the paper and all that.
I think he wants to hire another employee, is what he's saying, because of the increasing workload and.
Well, we should be having a museum come online here if they ever.
Yeah, I think he gets a separate thing for them to run the museum, the operations for that. But this is another, like, admin employee to help them out with some of their day-to-day.
Well, that, that for him to, that's for him to make that judgment call on that. But I was just wondering why you went from $112,000 to $174,000. Don't have no problem with it because I know you get a certain percentage, a 9, 10%, you know, so.
Well, this is way below that.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, but I want the public to be able to know where it's coming from.
Yes, ma'am.
And why.
Along those lines, remember now that they're now managing, he's now managing the, that app, that mobile app because that's something he did mostly on his own. God, there's two other things I know that he's taken on since that time.
I just want me.
But for the public, yeah, I know you guys know.
Because it sounds like, the way it's written, it sounds like Mr. Solomon's gonna get $174,000.
Yeah, I should have.
And I want to make sure that nobody.
Exactly, I've had, I've had.
I should have said it incorrectly. On the record, the, the Chamber of Commerce, which is actually who you, your contract with to administer to the TDC, that's who's getting the money, not Mr. Solomon himself. And I should have, that's a, you're right, Commissioner, I should have said that.
And, and see, that's what. Yeah, yeah. And you see, that's what we got to make sure we do, is make sure the public realizes where the money's going to because that's a lot of stuff I hit out there when I went out there this time.
Why don't you, Michael, tell, what it's, John, give the breakdown on that for the next meeting?
Okay.
That would be good.
That's a good idea, okay.
Yeah, that would be good, thank, thank you, Mr. Noah.
I'll stop on that.
Yeah, yeah.
So are we still moving with an action today or are we delaying to next meeting? What are we asking to do here?
I, I, I would recommend you go ahead and give me approval because of negotiation and then when he presents his breakdown, then you guys in the next meeting could say yea or nay because he'll have everything at that point.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Moving along with the plan, Mr. Morone, you just presented us to go ahead and start negotiations.
Mm-hmm.
Then next meeting, you can come with the breakdown.
Of his expenses, his income, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
And I say his because I, I need to stop saying that of, of, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so number five, like the big, oh, I'm sorry.
So good, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
All right.
They already told him one in the book, didn't they, when they said that sound was good?
That was kind of rough, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. And, and there was, someone had filled out a, a speaker card to speak on it, but they're no longer on the line. So I don't know what happened, if it's a change of minds.
Maybe it was covered.
We'll be here all afternoon.
Yeah, maybe they'll speak at the next meeting, you know. Okay, number, number five, Commissioner, that's the biggest item in my report here. The last meeting staff was authorized to contact the Corps dredge contractor, Mike Hooks Enterprises, to see what could be done to dredge the entirety of the East Point Channel as the Corps contracted scope fell short. After discussions with the contractor, there appears to be 1,400 additional millimeter feet that will need to be dredged to make the entire channel navigable. In the attached schematic, that's attached in your electronic packet, the areas in the pink boxes, colorblind, will be the site of the additional dredge work. Coastal dredging company, which is the subcontractor for Mike Hooks, has provided the attached estimate of $275,000. That's also in that same document for the additional dredge work. And confirmed, there is a capacity available for the additional volume of spoil and permitted disposal site with no change to the existing permits. There are several areas with dry sediment, you know, as I created, the sandbars, which have blocked the old channel. For the removal of the dry sediment, a land-based contractor will need to be engaged. Attorney Schuler, heading your way as this project is time-sensitive with the dredge contractor already mobilized and onsite, staff sought bids from three local contractors to quote what it would cost to remove the dry sediment. Off the estimates received, the lowest bid, quote, was from Coastline Clearing and Development for $52,000. We, if the board is good with this, will need the county attorney, Attorney Schuler, to look, to draft some temporary access easements and agreements with the property owners to provide the access for the land-based dredge efforts. So, commissioners, are we going to proceed with this emergency procurement to pursue the attached scope of work and the proposals mentioned above?
Do we have to declare emergency?
Yes, kind of where I was heading with Attorney Schuler, trying to get it.
We do because they're already here. If we go through the normal process, we're gonna miss that boat.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Forty years.
Mr. Chairman, and it affects permitting and things like that as well, right? If we wait, we don't declare an emergency.
That's right.
But just for clarification, so what we have currently, we're, we're getting this done extra because I think they, they shorted us a little bit. So just for clarification, the, the channel that we're asking for per the county extra is beyond David Barber, Barber Seafood on the east side.
On the east side, yes.
And then going to the west side, we're going past Millander's Trailer Park, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's definitely something I personally think we should do. I think that they shorted us, I want it to be an avicable channel. But as I've stated in past meetings, we need to make sure that we don't wait 40 years for another dredge. I think we are in agreement on that.
Yeah.
With that, I, I'm gonna go ahead and, and approve this to be done. I don't really like doing it on an emergent basis, but here we are presented with this and we have to basically, because they're already mobilized and we need to act.
Okay. So Commissioner, your, your motion is to declare an emergency, bypassing the ordinary bid process and proceed with the project as it's been described by Mr. Morone?
Yes.
So I have a motion to approve.
I'm just asking where the funding gonna come from?
Miss lady.
Actually, your tourist development tax, actual channel maintenance is authorized by statute. So that it is.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Sanders.
Because it's.
Discussion. Yes.
Now, they, I want you to put in there, I ain't got no problem with them doing that. But they told us in the beginning, after two weeks, they focused on another jury. They told them, and they be working on both each other that.
At the same time?
This is when they start, though, they haven't started it actually.
I think it's December.
They're still building, Commissioner Lockley, they're still building the berm on the one in East Point. That's where dredging's not supposed to take place or start until the beginning of December sometime.
Okay, I want to.
So the middle of December sometime, you should see one at both locations.
Yeah, I'm gonna hold the code to them.
Oh, yeah.
We all do.
Okay.
Commissioner Amerson, you remember you asked me, we were talking about this, that you wanted to make sure that they were, the, the channels were deemed. Because they wanted about the maintenance and I told you, I talked to the chairman, this, I, so I just kind of wanted the chairman to kind of answer that question for you because he had more, he had more conversation with the Corps and somebody else and somebody else.
Well, that's what Congressman Dunn.
You used with Congressman Dunn, I was trying, I was at the hospital, I was trying to get there and I didn't quite finish up because that was a concern.
Yes.
You know, back up, what, about three weeks?
So, so it has been confirmed several ways. Both of these channels are federal navigation channels.
Right.
Our issue has been for lack of connectivity to the ones that control the funding source. We have been able to, unable to keep these maintained. So going forward, I assure you, I intend, and I, this is board does, to make sure that I stay engaged and attached with the Corps of Engineers. So when they start talking about their next round of funding, that they remember Franklin County is gonna still have needs to go in form for these channels because they are federal navigation channels. I confirm that with both of them. And as a matter of fact, the documents, Mr. Morone, that it was given to us when we had the pre-con meeting, in the legend, it says federal navigation channel.
You got the Greek, you got the rain in it, and them too.
Yep, that's right.
The rain.[1765.12] The rain.
You got the intercouncil, the central.
Yep, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Uh, I want to, while we're here, before we vote, I just want to make sure, say this publicly, so people understand why we're where we are. So from the time I got on the board, and it's been supported by the board the whole time, we've been working toward getting both of these channels drenched, and where they need to be. The whole time, the permit for the East Point Channel was not a complete permit. But every discussion I had with the Corps was starting over, and I'm like, nope, 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 we, we not starting nothing over. We've been, as long as we've been getting to this point, I don't think it would be good for our residents and citizens for us to start this process over again, because I don't know how long it took to get to here, or there's no guarantee it's gonna move faster if we start over.
Not as it be allowed.
Yeah, so this, yes, so this is something that I knew the whole time we would have to try to address as a board, and I'm just thankful, uh, for the board today for potentially making a motion to help make this a reality.
And don't let Commissioner Sanders get started about how they took the money from us years ago.
Oh, yeah.
Because we'll be here for the afternoon.
Two thousand and five.
Yes.
I, I got one other thing with it, with it pertaining to Two Mile, and we discussed it about, uh, the spoil site on those islands, did you ever, uh, talk to the Corps?
No, yeah, to, well, to, um.
Because I've got, what, just so you guys know, I've got, uh, you know, property owners do their ginger creamer, uh, you know, other landowners that are, that are concerned because, and I have been up over those islands in the air, and there's very minimal hard surface, most of it's marsh, so that, in, in years past, those islands have protected in storms, uh, and that's why we didn't have what you seen after Dennis, when Lynn and all them got demolished.
Yes.
Two Mile was still intact, so to speak, because of those islands. Now, what, what's happened is obviously erosion has deteriorated after other storms, but I've got a lot of landowners there, want to know why the Corps can't pump that back on the islands, just like they've done, they're doing now in East Point, instead of putting it elsewhere, and we can use that for a barrier for future storms, as it was intended to begin with, and that, that, that's why I brought that up.
I was gonna reach out to Whale and, and ask him about that.
As long as it don't require us changing the purpose.
Well, I, now, I don't want to hold anything up, but I, obviously, uh, you know, um, if, if we can, at least find a justification why they can't do it, that way, you know, the public will know, especially people in the area that's, that's concerned.
Yeah, the Army Corps was actually, uh, in charge of permitting the Two Mile Site, and they actually did the Uplands disposal site, because I think that was already a pre-existing.
Approved site.
Approved site, so it was actually easier permitting for them as well, um, and it's not necessarily that they don't like open water disposal sites, um, but DEP, you know, the state of Florida actually does not like open water disposal sites, so that's, um, that's kind of where the complication comes into play.
Insurance Commission don't like.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, well, so, yeah, we got some work to do.
I, I, actually, Commissioner Emerson, I'll make sure Wendell from the Corps makes sure he gives you a call, so you guys can.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
That'll work, that'll work a lot better.
Any more discussion on this motion before we vote, as we haven't voted yet?
Oh, we're still there?
No. All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's your names.
All right, we did six, seven, eight, let's move down to some informational items, uh, the firefighters' training, I, I've just read it there, it's, you know, it was on Tuesday, it was a small group, they're, they're, they're really get it go, get it going. Um, so he was good, Robert Amick was good with it, and so their next meeting is, the next training is on Saturday, December third. Now, I will say this, I've gotten a couple calls that it was said at, at the Landmark Village meeting, that it's open to the general public and everybody could come by, no. It's not, it's for firefighters only, this is training, I mean, they are there, he's teaching them about, you know, getting their hoses off the truck, getting them back on the truck, how to drive the truck, et cetera. So this is for volunteer firefighters only, I really need to get that message out there, Commissioner Sanders, if you could, really help me out with that.
I saw one of the flowers that, uh, Robert Amick is, is putting out, and it's, it's good looking flowers, so maybe people will take notice to it and understand what it means to that.
All right, so, Commissioner, I'm not even gonna read number ten, I'll just let you go ahead, because, uh, because now you could engage, you know, the rest of the board with what happened yesterday, and how we could add Commissioner Lockley's suggestion to that triad list we're trying to form with them, so.
So yesterday, Mr. Moron and I were able to meet with several people from the Triumph Board, Ms. Susan Skelton, uh, I don't remember Ms. Corey's last name, anyway, Mr. Redd, there were several of them. And what, the discussion we had was, so our issue for, for this county, the whole time has been, uh, and the statute's pretty clear, it's tied to economic development, and specifically to the creation of jobs, and there's clawback measures to it. So what we're trying to do is keep asking, and just find a different way to ask, uh, because it was no one way, but it might not be no the other way. So the, the discussion we had, Commissioners, was about a couple of projects, uh, here in the county. One was moving forward with doing something with Williams Memorial Hospital, uh, maybe possibly even doing it in stages. Uh, the other was with all of our volunteer fire departments and their radios, and their equipment, uh, and our towers, whatever needs doing, that's a, a valid need. And the other one was with actual economic development at the airport, and these were the points that we tried to make to them. So, uh, uh, I'm sorry, the other one's, the new EOC bill, uh, because in statute, it does allow for it to be considered in the statute that controls what Triumph does with the BP dollar. That if it's, if there's, there's a provision in there for emergency response, and for being able to meet needs on the fly, and my, my pitch was, well, you can't be ready for the emergency day if you're not ready to day. So every day, you have to be ready for the emergency, and I get that they, you know, they're, they're wanting to tie it to a specific event, but we don't need to wait for another Hurricane Michael for, to try to move forward with the Triumph project. So those were some of the things we talked to them about, and we also tried to express to them in the best way we possibly could, on your behalf, that a lot of these things, and people say, well, Williams Memorial Hospital, well, we have such a medical need here, that even people that might, would locate here, it hinders economic development discussions. That's just one of the needs, but that's part of it, so that was the pitch we made, emergency response, being able to handle the emergency issues, uh, and, and being able to actually move forward in economic development, and have something that is marketable, that people are gonna want to locate business here, and start the, the process of diversifying our economy. And I will say this, we didn't get any yeses yesterday, but we got, we got no no's, so we're kind of in between, we're all, they ask us for some homework, we're gonna submit some more stuff to them, kind of see how it goes. And I think what Commissioner Lockley was saying can tie us straight in with that.
Yes.
If you don't have the infrastructure in place, as we're well-known after Hurricane Michael, when nobody's stuff is working, forget the internet, the cell phones, there wasn't nothing working. But if we had broadband cable in the ground, it would be a lot different than relying on cell towers. So I think what Commissioner Lockley was saying could be added to that list with that same mask.
With broadband.
Yep.
Well, actually, do, if she doesn't mind, I'll get Pat to give Susan and Corey a call, and let her know what we discussed today from her end with broadband, how she, what she represented in the county, and then Commissioner Lockley's concern could be incorporated in that, as part of our pitch to Triumph, our overall pitch was, we're gonna turn as many projects as we can and then see if, which, what gets funded. That's, they want to help, they want to spend us, but it's kind of like we have to ask the questions, or write the projects in the right way, using the right, what's that term that you use all the time? Trigger words, what Erin used, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we, we've had this discussion before, what's good for Walton County, or, um, you know, some of these bigger counties, isn't, is it good for us? You know, we have to tailor it to the smaller rural counties, so I know that's something you probably emphasized to them as well, so.
Yeah.
They want to put the whole full to cut.
What we will do, what they recommended yesterday, so, uh, well, Color County got that big grant for their communication system that covers EMS, fire department, everybody else, so I'm gonna reach out to that gentleman and see if there's a possibility, if we kind of write a smaller grant, that's what, I believe that's the hint they were trying to give us yesterday.
The same.
A more smaller, but working with the same, maybe the same, uh, vendor, possibly, because that's a vendor that they trust, that they like.
Right.
The nominee has experience with it.
Yes, so there, Commissioners, we might be able to get funded for your whole volunteer fire department, a brand-new communication system with radios and computers and equipment and everything else, and that's.
They're awful.
Oh.
They're awful.
You know, so.
And they have been for years, I've got, I've got one thing, and I'm gonna just throw it out there while we're talking about it. Um, you know, back when we did summer camp many years ago, we did a, uh, an agreement with St. Joe Company for Alligator Point Fire Department, and what it was, uh, that at the time of the first occupancy, the certificate of occupancy, they were gonna donate three acres of land at three seventy, at ninety-eight, for a fire department, you know, whatever. There is, I'm understanding that it has reverted back to St. Joe, and it is, I just want to inform y'all what I intend to do, so y'all will know as a Commissioner. But what I intend to do is contact the representative for St. Joe, uh, George Gonzalez, and ask him if there's any way that we, we, the county could get that three acres? And it would be, and then, and when it, when you make out the deed, you would put in there, this is what I want, I want to put EMS, sheriff, and community, you see what I'm saying? And because the, the, the fire department has already, you know, committed their stuff to that down on the point, I don't like that, but I, there's nothing I can do. I'm for something, uh, you know, landwork, and so if we can get this and get an EMS, an EMS, let me put my glasses on, an EMS, um, a, a sheriff's office, and, uh, the community thing, like, you know, when, when you have, we've already got plans for it, there's been plans for building, we've already got the architectural stu-, you know, stuff, and do that, so that's something that we could do there, that would follow that, anything we need for the land architect, you know, that's something that you, we're gonna have to, because you all, we have a problem in the eastern end of county, we have, don't have any kind of EMS services from Carabelle East, and from Carabelle North to Liberty County, and that is bad. We are very fortunate that we haven't had any big-time accidents or anything like that, and one of my driving forces of being here, like I said, my mission, my vision, is to see everybody be able to have access to emergency medical services, fire departments, and all that, we are just, we're, we're living on borrowed time, and I'm, I'm concerned about that. But I'm glad y'all brought it up and discussed that, because that's something that would go head in hand with this.
We're trying to put requests, ma'am.
Can I, can I just ask a question, because, again, I'm the new guy, but I've noticed something, you got EMS in East Point, then you got EMS right there in that plaza before you hit the Carabelle Bridge. And that, I don't know how to say this without, I'm not trying to insult anybody, but, you know, it's kind of like no man's land, that whole Yance area.
Yes.
You know what I mean, I mean.
It is.
That EMS, to me, and Carabelle should be further east, so it could better access, you know, uh, to, better facilitate that in. It just seems like we've got an overlap right there with East Point and, and this side of the bridge, if it makes sense to.
It does.
It's just not heavily densely populated area, but then on the other hand, you've got people out there on, uh, Alligator Point, which, I mean, I don't drive that, but what, it's about thirty-five minutes from where that EMS station is to maybe Alligator Point?
Absolutely.
You know, that's, that's, that's a pretty critical timeframe.
It is, it is, it used to be in Landmark Village where the fire station was, but there were some issues at the fire station, they, so they had to, they had to move. And that's the, I, they say that's the closest spot they could find, I was, I was kind of pushing them to stay in Carabelle, I wanted them to stay in the city of Carabelle, no further than that, but they couldn't, they said they couldn't find anywhere. So that's where they are, but I agree a hundred percent, they need to go back further east somewhere.
And I, I agree with, with Commissioner Sanders, that's, that's just a, that's a tragedy waiting.
It's a long wait.
It's a tragedy waiting to happen, is what it is.
And I have already spoken with EMS, and they said they are amenable to something of in, in Landmark, if we can come up with something. So me and you need to get again to Michael and bring something to the board, that we can do that, and have emergency med-, uh, medical services. We're gonna get the fire department straightened out, it will not take long, y'all done a lot on it, but you got to keep driving it.
If you remember, I wanted the, um, I tried years ago to get the, uh, the PMS at, at the, that building, the DOT building that we have around the curb right back out of view. But there was a question about us investing in that building because we didn't own the building, you know, so, I mean.
It's still a good idea, though.
I, I still think it's a good idea with, with, with the signals, you know, you know the biggest.
Talking about the building that used to be, uh, that's.
That used to be the annex? Yes, sir.
We don't own it?
No, we leased it for fifteen years.
We have one of those forever leases from the state.
We got leased it for fifteen years.
Yeah.
Why don't we lease them some, what, ninety-something percent of this county that you have been talking about?
Yes, sir. But yes, we could start looking at, at a site for, he's, I'll get with, um, I'll get with Louis, and we'll start talking about that.
Because he said he was, I, I met with him, and you know me, I try to cover all my bases, and, because this is the number-one top budget in that part of county.
Yeah, and we are about to have to put a new roof on that building as well, so there is about to be a significant investment on the county's.
Can the state pay for that?
Actually, no, it's amazing, whenever they lease us locations, it's, um.
Well, they love to lease you, look, look at the.
Not very advantageous.
The Army Commissioner Emerson, oh, they love to lease you stuff and tell you, but you're responsible for fixing it.
Or the old DOC work camp, the one with the fallen roof.
Well, we just remember that when they want to add on to wildlife management areas.
There we go.
Yeah.
All is fair.
Yeah.
Was there anything about Triumph, specifically, you want to talk about, or did we cover it?
No, I just.
Because you'd mentioned about.
No, I just made notes and made sure we were circling back on our commissions, or commissioning, Lockley.
Yep, solid. I want to ask a question, Commissioner Sanders, how much property do we own over in Carabelle, the county?
The county, it's not much, you got Kendrick Park, you got that over there, you got, um, um.
Is there any property at Kendrick Park on the backside that we could have a, that we could locate something?
Hmm, there's forty acres of that.
But could we do access a different way and?
Yeah, because you got Meridian Street coming into the backside of it that we had never opened up.
I mean, we could potentially, because we own the property.
Yeah.
So we should build something.
Build it, yeah, that's location.
Get something temporary till we can, uh, investigate on this property with Sam.
Well, and if nothing else, you could put it on the side of the parking lot up there, at the ball field, and you could put it right there at the parking lot.
We also own the fire department now.
Yeah, get a mobile building or something. That would be, I mean, that would save a lot of time not having to come through Carabelle.
Anyway, just, just to.
Need to get it done, need to get it done.
That's a good idea, though.
Okay, I'll look at that, talk to Louis about that too, good, good idea. Excellent.
Right.
And the other two items on my report, Commissioner, not to move along, but they're just, they're disinformation, but, you know. Just let me know if you want a copy of the Leon County annual report.
I don't think, I think I resist that.
I'll abstain from that. Before, is that it, sir?
That's it for me.
Okay, before we go completely past it.
No, no, go ahead, I'm sorry, I have one thing to bring to the board.
Yes.
Carabelle, Carabelle has, uh, reached out through Steve, so, so their, their building official will be unavailable to them for a few days, maybe a week or so, hit and miss. What, what, what Steve is asking for, uh, is to be able to assist them, to go and look, maybe do some inspections for them, and, and return the inspection report back to them for their signature. He, your billing official, will not be signing off on anything, so it reduces any liability, he will just be their eyes and ears. He said more than likely, he'll do video type, uh, of whatever they needed to inspect, you bring that back to the city, and then they do with it what, what they would like. Um, I want to make sure you guys, I, I don't know exactly what they want yet, it's kind of, this is very preliminary here, I just want to make sure this board is good with that. If I have to, I'll reach out to each of you and say, okay, this is what they want me to work it out that way, and then at the next meeting, I ratify something. I just want to make sure you got, uh, no objections, I'll work through Attorney Schuler if necessary, as it comes to that, but I want to make sure you guys are good with that. We're helping on the city of Carabelle, which may be a very short window, if at all, but I kind of wanted to mention that to you, because I don't, we don't meet again for two weeks, because this has an extra Tuesday in this month, we meet again on December sixth, I kind of wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I did, I did speak with the mayor, and she is okay with that temporarily, that, that arrangement, so, I'm, 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 I'm with it, we need to help them out.
Okay.
I, I, that's my opinion.
I'm not, I'm not gonna ask for a motion right now, because I don't know what I'm asking for, if you follow, we're, we're.
We're lending a hand.
Yes, we're lending a hand, I like that, thank you.
Is that good?
Now I'm good, sir.
Okay, so, I want to get with you after this, but I want to make it known publicly, so, we continue to have an issue, as we know from the ones of us that were here, some of you weren't, but that's fine, we'll go ahead and say it this morning. We had this meeting about two months ago with FWC, talking about bears, and the population of bears in the county.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it, it went from three hundred to whatever, I think they said now it's about three thousand, uh, it was almost two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, as one was cutting across the. It was almost 2,999 as one was cutting across the front of my yard last night. But anyway, that's another discussion.
It's been seen one at my house.
Because on that report, they said that by 2030, they expect to have 12,000 bears in Franklin County. I know that Seminole County was able to get a grant from FWC to give every resident bear-proof trash cans. And it's been relayed to me that the only reason we haven't been able to do it is because we haven't asked. So I want to work with you, we're going to put together a letter for the board to approve at the next meeting.
Okay.
So we know what language we're putting in it for us to ask FWC for those kinds of grant funds.
Okay.
Because, you know, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we should ask them if we can do a controlled bear kill again?
That would be great.
I don't think it's going to happen, but, because I guess your bear hit my trash can as well. I do have a garbage bear-proof can, and it did not get into it, but, like you said, other people do not, or maybe they can't afford it.
I was cutting up a minute ago, but thankfully, that bear continued to go that way, and I continued to go the other way, and we was all good. But anyway, I just wanted to, that's what's been relayed to me from people that have been in discussions with me. Oddly enough, there are only five in the state, five FWC bear biologists in the whole state. There are five. So those are the only ones that can make determinations on programs like this, on stuff to do with bear kills, you know what I mean? Those are the ones that make that determination.
So Mr. Kramer will be here at your December 6th meeting, the Regional Director. Would you like me to give him a hint that we may be asking you about bears, too?
Maybe not give me a hint, let's just hit him.
I'd surprise him. Don't give him any hint.
Don't give him no hint.
I'll kind of...
He brushed me out.
The other thing is, so I continue to, and I don't know if this is going to be your attorney, Schuler, I continue to have a particular zoning issue infraction in my district.
Uh-huh.
Most of it has to do with parking. I have attempted to, as Commissioner of the District, not tried to put a ton of no parking signs down Gulf Beach Drive, but people continue to want to park there in between the road and the shared-use non-motorized-use path that's there. It's not for golf carts, it's for bicycles and pedestrians. But there is continually to be littered and filled with vehicles, and during the summer, they're parking there. So I don't know if it's something other than addressing it by signs. We, as a county, can address those particular spots, because they seem to be a problem, and put something in our, in an ordinance, or something that we can hand the Sheriff's Department and say, no, this is definitely how we feel about it. Because they have continually told me, without the responsive signs, they don't know there's anything they can do about it. So, you know, no parking signs.
Attorney Schuler, in your recent right-of-way ordinance, that wouldn't fit in this particular...
No, it's for unimproved right-of-ways. It was dealing with a very...
Okay, all right.
So, among other things, that's part of the problem. The other part of the problem is we continue to have people building monstrous houses that they are now turning into venues, and that's where some of this parking problem's coming in.
Yeah.
Because when you have a house for 20 people, and you invite 150 people to the party, they've got to park somewhere.
Yeah.
So that's, these are still zoning issues that are happening in my district. I just want to bring it up today, because we need to try to find a way to do something better.
I'll discuss it with the mayor of St. George.
I mean, well, I'm not trying to do anything intrusive, but it's already happening.
Yes, I...
And if we don't, if we don't take a stance somewhere, it's just going to get worse.
Yeah.
But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. And is that it for you?
Yeah, I think I've kept you here long enough.
You didn't bind any of those hooks. Attorney Schuler, do you have anything, sir?
Thankfully, I do not have a report, but I do want to welcome Commissioner Amerson to the board and welcome Commissioner Sanders back to the board.
Is it Commissioners' comments now?
Yes, ma'am, sure is.
Can I do something? I got to take two items and just mention them. Okay. Alligator Point, this is for Michael and Mr. Schuler, Mr. Schuler especially. Alligator Point is working on a golf cart ordinance.
Golf cart ordinance, okay.
Golf cart ordinance. And I will bring you all the information about it and everything, but also, we need to move forward on the multi-use path down there that is going to go by, through the fire department property, and we need to do that pretty quick, because if we have a golf cart ordinance, that's where they're going to have to ride it at. You see what I'm saying? Because you've got the mileage and everything. So as soon as I can give you the information and everything, we're going to proceed on and do sort of like a workshop on it and stuff like that. How about, does that sound good to y'all? Okay. The other thing is, earlier when we were talking to Howard, Mr. Kendrick came here and said that we needed to contact the Department of Corrections. So I know we can't bet on nothing, right? But we can address something.
That's right.
At the appropriate time, we need to have a letter written to the Secretary of DOC, which is Mr. Dixon. We need to send a copy of it to Governor DeSantis and also a legislative delegation about requesting that Franklin County Warp Camp be opened back up and running. And I'm just going to bring that up, so we can see that part of it, okay?
Okay.
And I think that's about it for me right now. I got some more stuff, but I'm going to wait.
Any other Commissioners' comments? So I do have one additional that I completely forgot. Mr. Marone, I need you to try to set up an appointment for me, since I do represent this board as the chair, with incoming Senator, or now Senator Corey Simon, to make sure that we have the same discussion with him that we have already been having, continuing with Representative Schuler, specifically about the reconstituting the East Point Water and Sewer Department as part of what's going on. It has to be done by an act of the legislature, and I believe it would be a good thing for us to have that communication with Senator Simon.
Okay, I'll work on that.
And the only other thing I've got is the Seahawks are going to be downing somebody in basketball tonight, and Leon happens to be the one that's on the slate that kicked the season off tonight in East Point at 7:00.
Leon?
Leon, Leon High School. So if you want to see some high school basketball, they'll be in action. That's it for me.
Commissioner Amerson and Commissioner Sanders, I can't believe that I have to pay you overtime on your first meeting, but you really don't run this late.
Sure.
No, it's good, but I do want to, I do want to say I'm glad to be back home, because it was my home for a long time.
Glad to have you.
Yep.
Glad to have you.
And I embrace Commissioner Amerson, he's going to love it.
He's going to try and scare me out.
Any other Commissioners' comments before we adjourn?
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got one. I need, Michael, what they doing about our ethic?
Yes, I will have the, I'll have that in my next report, to have a date where either you do it, I'm going to set up, send it to you if you want to do it online, or Commissioner Lockley still wants me to do it in here using the FAC, like we did the last time?
Just watch it together.
Run it in here, together you'll have a choice. You have to worry about that this year, Commissioner Amerson, you're clear for the year. I'm going to send you an email from FAC explaining all the new Commissioners stuff. I will. I'll actually call you guys separately and have that ready for you, okay? And guys, I won't see you guys again until after Thanksgiving, so I will talk to you, but we won't meet again until after Thanksgiving.
Wish everybody a...
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Yep.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Yep, everybody. Very happy Thanksgiving.
May you, sir?